Welcome to Monday on Wednesday. We will be discussing school board. The woman who is so present for the bar of this session. Yes, we have.
Here.
Miss Cosby. First, yes, it's open. There, Dr. Smith. This page, here, you have to sit down in chair.
For the record, this floor, now here, through to the fourth.
Did you have any chocolate to see? Thank you. In the audience, here, pass.
The audience is inside.
Please pay your good luck. Next, I would like to have a question to play a religious of the science. It's all wanted to believe us, to pray to believe us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation, created in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. The next item is 03, that being of agenda, I have two changes. One is to end the vote to the vote session, and one is to move a 03, we seek the method of time to education, but continue, are there any others? I recommend the change.
We'd also like to move the staff in presentation.
Uh, should we begin? Uh, the administrative business, uh, some folks will be in the. Yeah, tell me what. The emotions? I'm there to do the discussion. I would like to add the amendment, and then the change of the papers to say. Second. It's been moved back as first, and secondly, I was born to adopt the gender as the. All in favor? Uh, do you oppose? Then, you have done, the gender as you have dropped, as you. And let the record reflect that you've been joined by Ms. Cosby. The next item is 04, approve the corrective minutes of June 17. The next is a special meeting, which you are at 12, and the four o'clock meeting, you are at 15, and the six o'clock meeting, you are at 15. Those minutes, I want to stream it to you, I can receive some edits, data, and, uh, corrected, and they are also on board, guys, and just ask that you approve them at this time. The emotions? I agree that we have heard the amendment and amendments. Second. The move back as first, and secondly, I was born to approve the minutes that come amended. All in favor? Uh, what? Do you oppose? The minutes have been approved and amended. Let the record reflect that you've been joined by Ms. Safari. Uh, the next item is, I'm sure you're public information that we have one speaker. What is your question then, too? Please all the speakers, just sign up. If you have to use an audience, the right speaker, um, please come forward, sign the name. And if you speak in, uh, the legal, we have, we have, we have, we have, uh, civilization at heart. Val Simeon is the person who thinks I'm up. It's Val Simeon.
Hello. I'm not a student, I'm a part of the state, I'm a. It's hard, it's hard work.
Exactly, okay.
Just shy of the years.
Yes, okay.
I have no reading English, and I am here at two RBS students. The problem with you now, I wrote seven years ago, very lax reading in the public. I wish to meet all the bodies to them in very full, in the life of the children. Saying, oh, well, to be this hot range to another school than everyone else in the neighborhood, means that we will be blocked back soon, we take the local element, we will pick the light. I wrote these words, my then school board representative, Lance Hurley, and I was a parent of a living in the public. At the time, my mother, when we began this, was only a young, very, very, very small. A school I had never set foot in. Very, very 21% white at that time. This is certain, and I itself, however, the human reserve should always, particularly white women's thoughts, or less, particularly white, for much work, from what I concluded. Ultimately, we'd be happy to believe that we're pretty for school. We believe both for great schools, and that, of course, the most important thing. What did I mean by great schools? What did I mean by only the lives to be of the period? Why, let me try to involve other humans? As you know, that my goal was closer of art's frame, and where the family of the good and glory waxed and seemed to join the fair, while my enjoyed life, they were perfectly bound to God. I remember at the time, you know, very unfair, that well, people, I didn't even hear anything about the great school, while I found crystal that I was a virgin. After all, I'm just a lot of city, and the city wants to work in it, keep it around. But I failed to, for the sense of the school, I think, does not really, worth the speed that anyone can show that, or necessarily, but I failed to consider, first, that the need that I don't have, of the earth, to have all that he did answer, or leave to not be off the truth, to the time, you are, you are, and, well, of course. Well, I always thought surely no one would expect me to live for 1.1 miles from my home, when there was a sudden, the good, the point nine miles. Children in the land also, as others, could be recent, from one school, that was about six years, the school has one place during my life. So my actions depend for, that I have been taught to me, to have a good neighbor, my wishes mattered more, my children mattered more. Plus, thanks to the good of the God, the very good of the people, but I didn't have mine. I didn't be a good school, but God, but only because I was a good one with two masters. And for that, I am honored. It was still the night that I saw myself in the land. I learned about the natural integration, and the very essential way that white people resisted. I realized that I wasn't modeling, that I was a standard for my children, and that surrounding myself with other white, wealthy people, who kind of, the children. I realized that it was my inability to teach my children about it, and the way that they, that's why, to affect people, not to find that it doesn't exist. The more I searched my heart, the more I felt, the more I, I found. We are becoming again, and we have not, we need to have a family, not to, not to. We should, we should, we ought to be honest about how it feels on our, on the, the language, even when we're innocent, we're rather, so young. And many people talk about things like the importance on. We can research the benefits of the great school, and realize that, that the research is not unique, but all the revolution involved. We can put as much stock in the identity, the mindfulness, and flexibility, as we do with the schools. We value the one, the benefits of a living children, from three days, like three of seven, more than you value one of the community. We can act as something elaborate, action out, to bring other people's joy, and to other students' pleasures, to bring other people's purpose. We can stand to fall, to rule definitely, to population, and neighbor. And grateful that my children were too young, who were, are not actually, from the last few, the past. I don't want them to look bad, and, 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 remember the mom made sure we did the properly, with too many children, and children, and. I love them today. Remember the mom caught us with a little dozen of those around us, and that we are responsible for how a lot of actions are that, that people, remember the research after integration, to be that, to, 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 to. Thank you.
My name is Ha Ha Ha, I'm a student, I'm a student. First, I want to thank you guys, and now, for your dedication, love, and, 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 and. This call, anyone, and have a name where they are, subject only to their own, their own, their own. If you believe this, you know, why we are. Why I should zip them, they deserve our, our. Zip code is for law, not for social, economic, or, or, or. And the power of the earth should be considered, and towards service to. Before I leave, I want to thank the school board and administration, for your willingness to start that, 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 that. It must be done. Get close, must be made, to get work. That came to mention 25 minutes ago. I have seen the total scourge of this lack of segregation, that be at the top of every school board and city council, and, and, how long it lasts, gets out, and gets, gets on the ground. No one, you know. Not only was the fact of segregation that I was in the world, was the effect of stopping all of the city. I thank you anyway. We are sick and tired of being sick and tired. We are tired of zip codes, tired of the implicit gender, the sedential, man, social. Our national motto is equal, beauty, a minute work. Something that seems that for us, needs to disappear, and be replaced by evil. No, that is not the idea. We are to be ourselves, and all our differences, and also work, for us, and, and, which many people, many groups want to.
Thank you. Uh, here. This is, um, I would say, would be to have the, 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 the. Um, this is, uh, the, 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 the. The, 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 the. The evening's sleepover, ladies, I need to spend some time. I had this concern, when the result, our lives, goes to the top. After sleeping with parents, and all advocates, and some of the only community members, my concerns still remain. The timeline is overly aggressive. Some community members do not engage, and the parents continue to express concern at the pace of this process. Reasoning is elder that has been hunted for years, so I appreciate the warmest willingness to come near, or, or, on this process. Although, in one breath, and say that we are comprehensive, John, yet in another breath, we project the process, we can do it in six months. We are talking about some of the biggest issues facing RPS, equity, separation, language services and support. Now, not everyone will be pleased going ahead, but don't we want our major to be thorough, and want to follow, not, um. Once again, we started a huge plan at the end of the school year, and the bulk of the community meetings are held during the summer, when so many of our families, teachers, and staff are out of town, called otherwise unavailable. I would be remiss if I did not mention my disappointment at having multiple community meetings on the same night. What message does that send to those attending the first? Oops, I have to wait for the next meeting. Oops, now I get to that final meeting, the psyche mentally worn out from the first two. I know some of the board and administration would be disappointed, but the sky will not fall if comprehensive planning is not approved in November, or during May, or April. This board mainly the plan for the three new schools, and another plan for the entire district. If this board does its due diligence, the next board has no choice but to follow the recommendations provided by this board. It is worth noting that the current publicly distributed back only had 22 responses, and of those responses, 5% expressed concern over the pace, scheduling, and verification of these meetings. The one response in Spanish was not translated, and is indicative of the significant absence of support these students deserve from us. Furthermore, we have approximately 22,800 students in RPS. 5% response rate is wholly inadequate, and is significantly dissident, and packed for. Thank you. Thank you. Next item. The next item is I have three, or, an action item, to see for act, action, presentable actions. Please, and, and, we have two word numbers. The recommended town hall of the actions for school board meeting, scheduled for Monday, August 15th, through my team, week three. The nomination of 68 employees. The change of contract of 32 to 30. The resignation of 32 employees. The referral of one employee. The returning from leave of two employees. The retirement of two employees. The reassignment of one employee. The recognition of the plan of one employee, of four. And the need for support. Motion. Yes. It's a move that we found, we're back in line, we're starting, so, so. Let's get a mention. Any questions? All in favor? And, so. This final.
Yes.
This gives me. Awesome, I think. This is, yeah.
All.
That's the beginning. This is the last one. Yes, this is all. Yes. This is paid. Yeah. How do you pass this segment, though? Next item is I have four, or, visits, super update on the great company schools, education, family.
I go, I'm here.
Have to be loud. You have to have teacher voice, tonight.
Uh, uh, you also had me last, uh, provided, and this was, and also, this should be better. I'll leave, since she uploaded four dots, and, uh, I'm happy to share, because, like, we want to do it, uh, but. I'm not going to do the very things that's on the list, but I do want to hit a few highlights. Uh, front page is a rundown of the two programs we run. We run an actual program through NextUp, a partnership with NextUp, and we, I'll take a nap. And in that program, we provide, uh, basic technology for middle school students as their, as their, as their, as their, and as a preserver, we, uh, provide progressive, more, like, uh, the, the, the. Um, but the big thing for TechNext is that we have a center, uh, in their, for attendance, and the students can do the center parties. Uh, they have a free, uh, or piece of calendar for this program. Um, so, if students, if they show up, and, of course, we, 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 of, so. So, uh, one of the things I wanted to call out, it was the AI 109 laptops, tablets, and, uh, coding robots, to our students and students, and, uh, as, 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 uh. Uh, students, the, 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 things, some students get, uh, laptops, it's their first time, they get robots, they're, they're, they're all, which depends on where they are, or, 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 or. Um, and the other thing that was so exciting, uh we work capital one to deliver their code program, which is a national program that they have, and we help them develop it here in R P S. And at the end of the deal with the U S government, we have the separation and students actually use a kind of marketplace if they show up to act with it all. And uh our students have our constant one best app overall. So that wasn't just among our guest halls, that was for all schools in the region that Capital wants to support us. So that was uh that was a good thing for me that never go excited about it. Uh, then in Capital, also creating official like our management board, teaching support for the private artists because these schools continue to send attention to ask and they were going on a very good situation. Uh, moving on, Army of Future, Army of Future is by far our biggest program. Uh, just as a quick depression, we have good time foundation employees uh as college career advisors, we provide concrete to high schools, so they need for not to infest the schools of communities open and correct. Uh, and it was a good year and we continue to build out that one of the big things we're focused on is finding additional access channels for the career side. Uh, the college mechanism is pretty well built, easy to build. Uh, but the career side is still something that I think all regions still kind of figured out. A lot of students and other partners took careers and support them and go into that. So we started looking for partners to act uh in the community. Uh, one example is we see help is taken because of the hundred of our students this year. Uh, how do high schools do it without helping that they have? And uh, we're looking for other places that we can do that. We have to build permanent, teach soft sauce to some of the students. Uh, we recognize that one point fifty percent of our students don't go to the four year or working district, so we're trying to find a path for them. Um, and then just some of the numbers are there. Uh, one thing I would say that nineteen hundred and one of all names, we're only about a hundred and fifty seniors and a lot of our students are coming back to the community completely excited about. Um, and then we're continuing to look away to reach uh deeper into the cross population. So all the way back to the military, this is your representative uh as part of the organization of the military, right, that's true. Uh, we did some things about what they would be doing in high school so that they're ready for the college application for the top part career. Uh, so we started to work away before print awareness and engagement with those who are nine, ten, thirty, as they're coming in, four, eight, eleven, twelve, so actually worry about that. Uh, also in there, uh eighteen college course, three yard campus students, pretty much if you drive a day trip, they're going there and we're too to look uh at other schools in that range who might not be uh popular with as much as we should be, trying to add to it. And then we're actually also, we just met a lot of people, a partner who on their own, one of the college course, says anything they do around, uh and so we're working with them to hopefully uh all get a word with them, give them a kind of have access to this. Uh, let's see. We'll go over to the other side. Uh, we have two programs that we run. One of our roles is to serve as a dis-slayment in their past, to support stuff that's happening in schools that's made possible for the community of schools. So um, so what we have here that I want to clear out, we've got thousand dollars in Sasha's Vietnam five foundation business, not the objective of being helped to find from our values of our public. Uh, and that's up thirty-four percent. Uh, so we're expecting to make that in the next couple of years. And uh, we're constantly looking to do that and building conversations on that support Sasha's really serious. Uh, we fund a volunteer coordinator that works through community foundations and services at such a point of contact for our schools, even for our corporate partners, when our corporate partner work all through the community. Uh, so it gives everybody to make sure that corporate partners are forcing something on our schools and to make sure that our schools are finding good opportunities to create partnership with the foundation, you know, very, very good. Uh, and we fund that with probably several of our corporate. Uh, music, artists, music, 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 uh, East Bay, this festival, West Side, this festival, this festival, that is around, uh, all of those festivals, which puts in ninety thousand dollars into music arts this year, plus which is uh musical instruments, supplies, the art, going to the schools, beautiful choruses, uh violin, trumpets, all that. Uh, we fund uh eight five hundred dollars into fly swords, which is a no, a fist fight in the community. Uh, so I have a guy in that who's actually another thousand that uh on the contract, he's uh committed to pay for two theaters if we go. Uh, then we help broker, corporate balances, uh, involved in two miles funds. Uh, they're committed to knocking down the dollars for the past five years. Two miles funds on Wester, it's just on the road from the Rose's Gate, it's solely uh what it comes like. Uh, that can be over the years as as uh they give. Uh, they start at twenty thousand dollars and we just uh close, we're working on there, a lot of money, uh, and then uh I want to get through the grand opening for Rose's, they not so many five. So uh, and that will continue to go, and we'll continue to work at school, make sure that's going to be difficult things, make sure that the funding are aligned with the grant and uh whether it's a two priorities. Uh, the other comments, uh, one important thing that we said to go on shortly, uh, for the next six chapters, we'll be back, uh, we'll be November fifth, uh, we'll be there at Greenon High School. Uh, we're making one of the changes we've made, uh, I felt like it very important for us to come in and circle for our little ladies to come back into the school, if you've been a school worker. And it's the one thing for any of you that have to go to theirs or launches, in fact, I'm already second area, part of any of our other hotels now, uh, there's a name, but uh we want something quite different. And so we uh, we look for soul, we like we have to do one with, we do that. Uh, and then the biggest thing for us as we look forward to the next year is uh once the research finishes, it's the future plan, we're able to work with foundation including, and ask ourselves how we support this work, what is our goal? And it does our goal would change now that we have this this direction by uh desert. Uh, so it's a wonderful partnership from sort of kind of a team uh and the sort of leadership in our board, uh, we've been working on that for the past two months. It's been a tricky process because it forces the foundation to look at why we're here and what we should be doing and make sure that that is what the sources that we use is. So I'll summarize that with kind of two key points. Uh, and the first one is is depending on the sacrifice. Uh, the first thing that we need to do, what we're really looking for next year is make the move to get all the programs that work correctly. So we um, we will look to transition or be the future off to the school system to be going up and work up the guidance uh program inside the schools. Uh, and for TechNet, we're looking for partners to run that. With both of those, uh, we're very hopeful that I think it's be, joyful to be able to do, is we hand the brother and father the money off. Uh, so that whoever came over, we have money, uh, or have money because that is a force to send you. Uh, the other piece I think about is, if you think about Army of Future as an example, uh, Army of Future in its core is function of the schools, uh, in terms of what they had in common to do and it's still sad to do. And so it was wonderful that the foundation was able to replace their staff. Uh, but as it passes, there are, as has, you mentioned, the school category for development. It makes sense that students can integrate, the patient standpoint from A, uh, physician standpoint, and just from a function. And I think that for the foundation itself, it's good for us to replace for a good activity if you make, improve them, or find out the good work, and then we evolve, uh, and not like a price of the dollars after forty-eight. Uh, we are not experts in running, I guess, experts in money funding. Uh, and so that's what we want to focus on, which is on to that second significant point for us. Uh, as we ramp down the corporate operation, we did ramp it up, our capacity raises, raises funds for schools that can support the R P S. Uh, so that we bring around the different fundraising staff, that I mean looking at non-oligarch funders, to national operations, commissions, politicals, uh, who have the capacity to use it, set up R P S, uh, over multiple years. Uh, the cases that we're hoping to do, this is a plan to set out our goals, uh, are going to mean that's going to be non-passed by the authority. As better to say, I'll be working on that. Uh, so it's kind of being down program operation as we go, if we ramp down, we can all compare as prices to that popular market. Uh, is that pretty much how the rest, I don't know, will be, uh, and uh that will drive a lot of pieces. One of the papers that we've said is a little more difficult to do, uh, the front page, uh, is just bringing in more regular, uh, basic information to be off to the task about that. The goal is we're looking at this future plan alongside through the administration, the visitor, and what we brought to the team. Uh, so we're our women, uh, sort of justice, not the terms of how this is, how this is our schools, we're basically uh, for some of our foundations. And uh, I believe. There you go.
Thank you. You have a question? Thinking with the foundation star, many years ago, this is excellent, we've gone a long way. And I'm glad that you state that. Your purpose is to raise the money naturally for weapons, which I was also reflecting on by my volunteer coordinator. So my question is, what volunteer coordinator does connect with the Congress? Not Harris, the partner, who we do that together and so I could, I had no idea all programs that were just listed. Now I just see the back sheet, that is important, because I would hold to the report, because we're talking with the community as well, we share this affirmation that two programs, we get at least one report, because this is a large equation, and it's in favor of our children. So thank you so very much. Well done.
Uh, that Harris and Saul is now very close together, uh, great part of my point, money that I'll do better, uh, for better, we actually asked for a company for this, so you met together. Uh, we've been, I did, we would never be asking for that, and it worked. Something would have been right.
This is awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, this is great. I have a couple of questions. One, TechNet, the letter tells all.
We are playing the same schools that Max up in, like uh, four last year, we got. Our major shows are, people here are better.
And regarding, um, for which goals should we shift to, should we should funding that, and what, um, for the public to go, should I, um, for that mission to the company?
We haven't just talked about that. Uh, we may have talked about, um, yeah, I think we have set as a goal, five hundred a year, uh, but that is definitely how we, we're doing this as a, as a, pretty more nonprofit, on the account of I'm saying, we've been doing a lot this year, we have the capacity to do that. We have the help, we have to get it, that number. That number still is looking small now, but big. Uh, so we're still figuring that out, figuring that out in the future, but we're special. Uh, but we grew up and said, five years, five years, I absolutely, so it's not a, oh.
And my last and final question, so, um, with your, how on for transition uh, this is good, so you can go to the transition hall, the programmatic option is student creation, uh, what, uh, what?
The goal is that at the start of the twenty twenty-one school year, uh, they will take over, please select. Uh, we will, we have it working on a well for the summer, they, they're great, uh, the professional staff, they're coming uh, around council side, we do have to start a little closer than we ever had. Uh, so we did, knowing this is how we did it, the idea is that when we apply for the ballpark, uh, in the first half this, the two, four of this year, uh, we'll have to sort it out, and then, and then, uh, first one to the next year will be the actual business. She's like, do, uh, uh.
Just tackle the new goal.
That's right. That is, it's much possible, all of our. I'm not guaranteed, though. I don't think we do.
Hey, man, so, if you checked this, this five million, I'm sorry, as far as we have right now.
So we do on average, one week to one point three a year, they're paid, sometimes a year, it's like, they're a lot of, the loose money, I mean, they were a bit up.
That's just, that's just, uh, yeah. But, I don't know, we're just playing the doctor's, I'm sort of glad it's our time. So we, yeah, that is called, uh, here.
It's good, so, thank you. Um, I try to talk loud and, I feel bad. I want to check. I got my question, that's just me, um, I think it was going to be, um, how would it, strange for you that, you know. Um, okay, but, so the foundation, um, I, yes, my question would actually be more direct and short, like, for how, um, and that is, um, just the, I, I feel, we just don't believe that politicians are, are, are publicly governed, and, um, so I think that, and we always will, that, um, essentially when it comes to, uh, more dollars, that we, we look at our policies to see how we are able to bridge those that are going back, getting, um, I have issues um, into the system and that still going in, and parents, and, you know, we occupy for what comes from, uh, I find that our objectives and, um, I keep it attached, and so, um, so I guess, I guess this is for looking at, uh, the how the acquisition that's coming in from the foundation, um, and our current system and the way that we should, we should try to ensure that, um, that we're able to, those, those dollars can work, uh, through the public.
I'm happy to talk a little, uh, one thing that we're having in this conversation upward, uh, because the foundation doesn't want to, uh, or, uh, we know what, who, where we did, what we're about, we don't know about it. Uh, we also think, believe that the public has people access to that, and we want to make sure we do that. That's the thing, it doesn't, the B coming from, we're really not off the world, uh, just turning over this, the donors, and the sense of the experience, which is important for what we're supposed to do, if we are, et cetera, uh, that here, for a public, at service of public. So we're looking at our own policies to think about, are we doing things to make sure that we bring uh service visibility, uh, when, when we're bringing some prizes? Uh, any progress on what we think is, is, uh, personal or not. Uh, we want all of you to know that in the business, that if, and so, uh, there's, work at there's, uh, we want that to be able, we want you all to sit on the table, right, we've been reporting. Uh, you guys can also, we can push it up, we can also put it there. Uh, when we currently do that, we're probably not able to make sure that, uh, we have, kind of, our board meetings, we are represented by board meetings. Uh, and then just, I'm always a bit of a, if you just want to talk about, the rules process, I want processes, which is, well, maybe.
So for, um, main's aim, what, that there, the agreement, to see what updates foundation. When I, when I need.
Uh, for today, it's currently set up the school, the foundation, executive chair, chief chair, vice chair, and we're certainly, like, all, our members report, executive chair, uh, that's, uh, school board, that's a title, right? Right, right.
Well, big factor, and I think very much for, uh, for evidence, very helpful to know, uh, what the writing are, uh, I mean, I'm ahead, uh, head, um, and a lot of our mistakes is going to support one, uh, which is about, particularly we are really increasing this whole, uh, curious about two things. One, uh, one is how we determine what types of R P S centers we would allow to cover, or we'd want to cover by, uh, by, and then the other is, is with our, so if you, uh, do you think that you would, that, and so, state of mind, sort of sourcing, the source of courage, foundation, sort of, sources, how we, uh, how we exercise some of our, take side of collaboration to, to make sure that we're getting, or to, uh, not heads up, like, not choosing, choosing, uh, don't, uh, so we, we're curious, I guess, here, from your country side, as well as this. Well, one is, uh, what is you have said about, uh, today, uh, the rest hopefully, hopefully, uh, but, uh, I'll say a few. One, uh, the entire effort to raise funds will be one hundred percent for the life of the project. So it's not other shopping, it's for the school experience, it's the school that, uh, shopping for the school, and that's the things that this line has said, important, so. For two, uh, like, as, as Ty said, uh, uh, state, just in service, you're glad to be, or to be without reporting, and share with, potentially, uh, and to argue for, uh, uh, to, to, uh, I think some of these kinds of processes, uh, take quite some time, so, uh, people, yeah, well, I think, to, to, and, uh, to share with, uh, 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 because, uh, because, uh, because, uh, because we think we have to identify, uh, like, so your first question, you know, we would, uh, for the process of elevating this, uh, the idea is, uh, uh, foundation to, uh, it's for things that might be, uh, for talent, be, uh, or, uh, have with, uh, but not, uh, to, 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 like, salary, or, rent, or, or, uh, design things, to test things, uh, uh, to analyze.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm excited to hope to see what should be, like, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen, my odds. Yeah, yeah, um, please, uh, um, perhaps, man, chair, student, four minutes, set, man, chair, um, I'm glad, uh, um, to be aware of, I'm glad to present, um, the thought of, well, some, we have the thought of, um, student, we found out for twenty seventeen, this one, basically, and, um, I think that, uh. I have, I have orders, um, well, if a fine order was contacted now, to a on there, that I would ask for order to move, so for, for twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, I ordered it for that, and I, um, so seventeen, I have. Eleven, two, eight, one, nine, seven, eleven, two, two, nine, two, five, two, I have, I'm gonna find this for. I have one school that had fifteen, some controls for, um, twenty thirteen, and that's like, then I have, um, other students who play up in thirteen, find, undefined, these were lack of administrative, you, my recommendation was for them to, um, look at the data on a unscheduled basis, on these ones, uh, one a month. I have, um, this book, the petition of the acts, the record, twenty thousand dollars, the, the order, and I asked them to spend the time on the record, and so, um, and I gave them a list of the things that they shouldn't and how to do, that was my recommendation. Some of the other problems were, um, insufficient supporting documents for this, scan, disbursement, late deposits, deficit balances, um, purchases, plus the return, the amendment for, um, home purchase for this five hundred, unlike the, um, two hundred, the, the, so, um, that is a problem sometimes. For, um, I used, like, deficit balances, only two accounts, the grand accounts, the direct accounts, um, uh, the total expense and, um, other, with the, um, the postage and D N A's of purchasing, like, um, purchasing the date they reverse, they have to, who they are, um, who, but they use the, they can use to make the refund, provide the date they reverse, and then, and then. But, um, twenty eighteen, I had fourteen students, twelve, one post, and two, five officers, I had eight, eleven, two, two, eleven, two, and four, one, two, one, two, and then two of the, um, study students, I had them all, and then the half, I had, um, three, three, and this year I had, I tweeted together, there was only one food that I wanted to crush, but this year I did have four things that had good, in, um, the growth, and some of the things that I think this year were, um, copy signatures were needed, or expensive orders, or the, or signing the checks, or check, or that, at least, um, two signals. The petition of records were also a problem with one of this, one of the other fourteen students, audit, because he's in audit, audit was a problem with all the students that I found looking at, instead of the auditing, it was a problem, they just started writing books, and that's not a life, that's a, you know, that's a bad, you see, audit, audit, um, teacher holding money was a big problem, other problem, both years, and late deposits is also a problem, they, recommendations for the teacher holding funds would be, um, they are supposed to be writing, but they also, um, the selling sheet, and they could go to that Chicago, so, to, to sell the sheet, and I asked the, um, finance officer and the principal to look at the dates on the receipt from the year, so they have to date and determine the people to hold the money, and I asked them to also, um, require the teacher to turn the money every day that they collect, or any cost, you know, sign the name, because when I go out there, I'm looking at dates, and petitions, or mostly I'm looking at dates, the dates, they don't, the dates, the finance officer, the dates, another problem, a big problem was, um, once getting back in the dollar, over, two, was the finance only showed up in two, um, so I had certain, these are times where I gained lots of very courses, and, um, long, and, 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 what I found out was that a lot of students, I know they, they're not, they're not, um, you know, they're not, so, it's not as many students that, that collect the money.
Yes, I didn't hear, that's been enough, congratulations. Uh, it's probably, uh.
Uh, thank you, you sent a good report, uh, that we can.
Um, yes, there, the two thousand eight is on, oh, I'm, 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 two thousand thirteen, I'm, um, two thousand, uh, two thousand, I sent it to, um, but I didn't realize it was on board, but it needs, I need to be, feedback and clean down, but two thousand eighteen, she'll be okay. And, oh, I think I have three, three for this year, I was, um, ans, supposed to, um, two, three, I'm sure, and, and, um, they were special orders, well, one was a special order, because one, one of their checks, I mean, one to, um, sign check, so, probably they got pretty much of a poor order, but I did have to go back for a couple months because I went, and, and, um, they, which, they are always a month behind their report, their, 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 um, the, 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 the one that's, um, that's due, so they are, they are always a month behind, and when I knew that to be an audit, they were a month behind, so that was one of my findings, and I asked them to, you know, I, I asked them to keep the date of the parent, at least a year, at least once a week, so that they would know at all times where their balances are, um, some of the other things I found were, um, account analysis, one of the boxes that asks people how to go, they have set up the student fifty fund accounts, but they don't change it, and they, that report should reflect the type of transactions that they have on the database, and a lot of them, um, I found that they were only used inside of the accounts, they were listed. I found that, um, the principal, the principal was not signing, he still did about two, but just like in front of him, late deposits, teachers holding funds. One interesting thing that I, that I wrote on was up there, I was trying to, um, they had raised a bunch on the board there, but they were, they were more interested in, in money, they, they were more interested in getting the, I didn't have a recommendation, but I just looked at it, I know it did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I told my mom, I'll, 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 okay. The other information, um, but your process, if you, well, you are giving a recommendation there to the, now, we have twenty principal this year, so is there a, 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 so that you're trying to do some of these rebounds that they can talk about?
They, um, I'm in. No, no, I really need, um, I tried to be with one on one, which I know is very basic, because I, I hope we don't talk about this, because, well, this time of year, when they're coming in, I also have to be cash order, and I have to have that number time in, um, so, so, that's my, of course, and I know I need to do that, and I am calling them, um, on the, and also, I'm trying to leave when they want me to come, I was trying to go, because I'm, 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 I write it, for, um, it's, they have fourteen that I have on my, I've done three, and, um, talking at the moment, so.
So, the goal of the calendar is to, um, the, 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 of the, of the, of the, I don't know, I, I don't want to put it in the last, but, yeah.
That would be ideal, but I also have to be cash order, that is, that September, which is getting, ensuring that all the balances for twenty, uh, be available for our audit and, and correct, and give the excellent audit, that is, September first. Yeah, yes, that is very important, and I'm, that's.
Yes, that's all we're, I, one of my questions, those are, if you can see, see the reports, yeah, uh, so when you talk about fourteen new principals, are you talking about the upcoming year or this past year?
Well, the fourteen of one, this year, twenty.
So how many principals, new principals, we had in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the one that we just did?
Okay, nineteen is the one I'm auditing, now, um, I'm in the process of auditing now, I'm auditing the new principals, and that's fourteen, fourteen that I got listed.
Yeah, okay, and you just, right.
Yeah, but one of them, I, it's not, I have three months, I have to go back and pick up, okay, I, I did twenty five between twenty seventeen, I mean, well, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, I already have one with eleven, twenty seventeen and eleven and twenty five, and twenty eighteen was fourteen, that, well, no, was twelve new principals, I did fourteen audits, so it was twelve new principals and two new finance officers, and I had quite some, the, 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 because they let me find it.
Well, I may already answer my question, my concern is that, as new principals come in, their books should be audited, even though they may have the same finance, finance officer, but before this guy can see the collecting money from his school year, they also have, I already, as well as, uh, professional development, but it's all together, because we have private people, that, that, they are getting, they are getting part of the finance, and it, it part that I do, um, the internal control part, I, like, I sat down with some, they, for, when you talked to her, and, you know, when over, everything with her, but, um, I think they really need to, they really, but, we, we, that is, right, there's that part of the process, that when they, I know when I came, I saw before I could start, they, 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 they want to have to take place, is that a thing? Protect them, then that should take place, because we're not, two of those money, before they can start the project, that, that, maybe the same finance officer, right, principal in, first, exactly, they're responsible, right, so.
We used to go to, um, that, I, yeah, we used to go to that, we were, we were, right, we used to be part of that, and we would teach cap classes and stuff, so, I would always be a part of that, for the, for the, yeah.
So, so, and your process, um, so, your, your process, you, 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 it's close to.
A booth session, right. And, yeah, I need to go booth session, I know, but they, they are taking a lot of classes, so something, um, that's part of the problem, scheduling, scheduling the audits, they, they, well, we can't, um, they, I was trying to, that, um, and, they.
Well, I, I, I have to, perhaps, that's just a conversation, they would add the administration to, that, that, you know, that is important, to look right, for auditing, for.
I'm taking, yeah, I really, I agree.
So, this, uh, based on, on the report, and some comments, and colleagues have made of the task and registration, these are processes in place, um, to orientate the new principals, and, uh, when money is coming into the school, we support the charge, and then money within the day.
Yeah.
It sounds like this is, uh, a tight process, and I'm sure, when I try to audit it, senior auditor talks a whole, whole process, type of, you.
Okay, now, I'm saying, who's it, someone, what are these three, all, what are these three?
I'll wait, uh, could you put together the, one deep guide, the most important things for principals to do, which is, uh, election, uh, storage, and audit those funds, and to make sure that all the principals get that, and their, their, their records, management to get.
What do you think about, uh, my, 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 okay, who, who, that would be, three, okay, sorry, because you, you used to go to, um. Okay, yeah, okay, all right, yes, I have, okay, that's it, okay, thank you, thank you. For, for.
We need to get a school board members, um, since last, uh, school was the, the, the map and eighty percent over, uh, as far as, uh, uh, it represents fifteen percent, eighty percent, fifty percent, uh, so slight percentage of participants remain open, uh, the example that in today, the, 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 the,
I have a question. Um, reading my R D S statement, as I was in the first page, or I look at seven. Title one, reading the title one man, who knows who's had a visual, or this is just one teacher? This is a Bellevue, I see, uh, title one, reading, this is the, oh, this is not just an additional. No, these are additional, these are all the. Excellent, so what is the role of the admin coordinator? See, admin coordinator is actually, um, a central office position? I think she got our, the staff, some person working through office and then come to, come to the school.
But this, we have to do a position as an I P, uh, for me, that was for the I P coordinator.
So, this is all you guys?
Yes, not though, but they he, does it come down in, um, speed or what?
So, we just have additional title one reading, teachers and math teachers.
I agree.
So, excuse me, I, I, thank you, say what?
I agree, I agree. Uh, bringing in the appendix, it's just the university. Read this film, white is on. White is on that when the, uh, some of its second papers, like, are additional roles that would add the additional parts that we got to attention. The appendix is simply less equal where there was a weakness going into the secret.
Okay, all right. But it's this title one man, reading that Bellevue.
No, that is a.
Oh, that, that's, um, what was the paper? Okay, that's why we're going to talk about that. Because you, this is, this is a off page, too, of math. So, these are, these persons could go, okay, I don't know about that. So, these are, I was in the middle. I would have to give out the gold back to the board here, who said that's that? That's the thing.
So.
Read this film, it says it could be a house.
Are there any more questions regarding this presentation? Yes, um, I'm really, I'm, yeah, no. So, I would say if there's, if there's that, any more questions, we want to reset. But we are proud to ask for the technical difficulties and what's there to worry about or accept it for. Yes, so can we complete, complete this presentation before we also.
Okay, so interviewing and post screen, the long screen, we still have the, we're still.
There's that, you're very big there. It's not too exact, it's back and smooth. And determining what, and this is determining whether or not they should reform or actually review and call. And traditionally from the training phase, the fire phase, what's the, what's the time? It all depends on the, which is average, um, sometimes a week, sometimes, sometimes longer. And then you go with the older actions and you, you are, you are. This is good, so, thank you, um, so, um, I'd like to question is that the, um, the, the package for wearing, um, um. It was being learned that, um, the package for wearing dollars, that was for the specialty program race. And so I'm wondering, um, how many decisions about what the specialty program are and where it will be and how that's all about.
So, I would be interested in that it was all. Um, there's it's a lot of places to, uh, the first stage was, uh, directly required. Add more, uh, yards, use it, the flight begins, so. Uh, the later phase is, with all of that stuff, which is, uh, very specific. Uh, in that process, which will begin to assess, which is how good. But this was accomplished is to begin to build power to our students' access to kind of, with, with that, help, to make their values. Uh, get them, run maybe a lot to make them feel better. That's the thing. They will, they, uh, we just took the report, uh. I was at the, I'm reading, reading, but it's just like this, months ago, I think, correct? Do you remember?
So, will they look at the thing? Are you talking about, um, laptop?
Yes, well, that's, uh, like there, uh, we, uh, we put it. That's the thing.
Yeah, the big, the big, the time. This is good, thank you, um, yeah, so, uh, my, my director description, yeah, I don't know that. Here, there's a moment that, and you want to do that, uh, the, the, the reason part of, uh, the, the, uh, the, um, uh, uh, uh. Have a conversation about how does the teaching plan go now, in detail, this is the best, uh, specifically, um, and, uh, to, uh, one of that is, uh, for the study. For the teaching plan, so, um, my assessment, uh, perhaps, uh, the story I don't know, uh, maybe the teaching plan, the future. Um, so that we can, we can, we can, we can, um, how things are going now, how the policy, um, and, um, and show that, show that, uh, that way. Um, the other question that I have is regarding, so the, the twelve, um, additional, uh, positions for the teaching partners. Is that, what, what is the status on those positions in fact, they're doing it after that? They are really, really, really good. Um, and the first, the, the whole, the natural, that's all we're asking you. So, the final for those positions now, that's clear.
We are, since, uh, it's just been a, uh, they, it's a, uh, the other process is higher, they're simply, it's usually really to the common, uh, goal, uh, 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 it's more important to uh, do that, and create, to kind of, I guess, on the, uh, not self, rather than not being able to, 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 to set their targets. Now, on the first one, it's, uh, we have prepared, uh, before we, the, the, uh, order to tell, uh, we, uh, here. Includes, uh, both implementation check, one to the five, as well as check of all, all students. So, uh, that's already happened, but I think we'll be very, uh, uh, probably, uh, there, uh, more, yeah.
Um, that is, thanks to the, uh, that, you know, all positions, um, uh, I, I think I want to, to emphasize that, um, it is important, obviously, to, um, to let those positions change the budget. And I, um, I have a free consultation that, um, that, that the positions in that, you know, not type of position that don't know that you know, um, the board. Um, so, I'm not, not sure where, but I think that, I hope to get that there, having basically, um, um. Um, the other question that I have, um, is all the ten, uh, teaching plan is regarding, um, the, 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 um, I would presume that if you have a solid understanding of the position, then they would, um, that you would have that, that, um, to, to, the status on, um, uh, on that. But we would, we like, I mean, with, um, both the, uh, the T P A, um, uh, to, 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 to.
Really. Really. The order of, uh, the position to all possible, so, of course, is the data for our schools, uh, instead of business schools, uh, uh, to, 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 to. Uh, you will have the structures, uh, sometimes all, uh, the, 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 so, can't say it just yet until we, until we, until we.
But I did want to know that, um, there are features that, um, question that you could mention that in the past, uh, um, it's all, uh, that, that should be, the past, that's.
Okay, so we're almost complete, we're like, that to plan of the, it is a rare parent, I, and, and, and addition that we, that we've seen, um, for, is approved, and we will, and form, as far as the addition to those positions. We, I, so, yeah, my question regarding this presentation, the board we sat, anyone upstairs, and again, to apologize, with technical difficulties.
We would like to recommit all this fifth meeting, and again, we'd like to apologize for the technical difficulties in council chambers. Madam Kirk, next slide.
Next slide, Mr. Bob, point zero two, to see the JCT update.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Simmons had a sudden, uh, personal matter that he needed to attend to this evening. So, in his stead, um, I'll briefly, uh, just share the same presentation in, in, that's still time in the education compact meeting last week, which, uh, indicated the latest in terms of schedule, budget, um, and some pictures as well to demonstrate progress on which of the schools. Uh, the, uh, summary is, in essence, um, schools are on track. In terms of construction, the furniture costs are now at a hundred and forty billion. Mr. Seidel from the city estimates, though, uh, once you add in demolition, furniture fixtures and equipment, and some technology networking and such, which you'll note is, all listed as T E P, the total will come in at approximately a hundred and forty-six million. Also included in the presentation is some, uh, price per square foot comparisons, uh, with some schools in other jurisdictions and.
Ms. Gibson. Thank you, um, so, I guess I, I have a number of questions, um, and I, I presume that since Mr. Simmons isn't here, uh, we need, we need to have a, a little bit of clarity on them, but I want to just, uh, note them. Um, I guess the, the first question that I have, uh, is just regarding the, uh, the Richmond Community Schools average of three hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, I'm not clear on the math, with that number, when I calculated based on these numbers and the square wages that have been originally provided, the cost per square foot that I calculate are, um, three hundred and six dollars for the new, um, All Part School, uh, three hundred and fifteen dollars per square foot for Green, and three hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot for George Mason. Um, I, I also, uh, want to inquire more specifically regarding the, um, bid date that is being used as a comparison, um, with the, uh, inflation factor that has been noted in the comparison spreadsheet. Um, I'm curious as to, uh, where the, um, or what drove the lead factor of six percent, um, that because the way that lead works, the, the way that lead works, I mean, it, it really can fluctuate, and I'm not sure that we, um, are clear in terms of the, the design elements that are in those Chesterfield schools to know, um, what, uh, the, uh, design elements may be included, included, regardless of whether or not they're going for lead accreditation. Um, and then, uh, and, uh, questions about the third column of the factors. Um, and then the, the final question I, I would have is, I, I would like to have a, a clear understanding in terms of whether Chesterfield is using the construction management at risk process as well, um, if indeed they got through bids, I would presume that they were working with them with construction, traditional construction bidding process, uh, in which case I'm not sure the, um, the relevancy, to be frank, of their average bid cost, um, since presumably they would just go with the lowest price. So, um, so I just want to, you know, uh, I think I appreciate the, um, this comparison, but I, I, I want to explore the assumptions that are behind it to, uh, make sure that we are providing that apples to apples comparison.
So this was prepared by, uh, the city, and so we're more than happy to invite them back to the next JCT update and have them walk through the details, uh, in specific. Um, I cannot at this time, uh, speak to your questions, but I'd love to ask Mr. Seidel to come back and talk through his rationale for some of the decisions behind this.
Thank you.
And so, superintend cameras, as we receive monthly updates, JCT updates, um, in regards to Ms. Gibson's question, I think it will be in our best interest to have the subject matter experts, because we are not the subject matter experts in construction and, um, the construction costs and inflation, so. It's, in the next meeting, um.
Typically, we would, uh, since this meeting wasn't such close proximity to the education compact meeting, when the subject matter experts were there, um, we didn't necessarily think, uh, it was necessary to have it returned, but glad to have it on the next, absolutely.
Thank you.
Next slide, open this side of the spot to a pre-receiving rezoning update.
So again, I will, uh, briefly, uh, provide an overview. Looks like we may have the materials up on the screen. Uh, since our last discussion, uh, the demographics from Proper G I S has received a great deal of feedback, both from the public and from the rezoning advisory committee. That feedback was incorporated into two additional rezoning plans, option three and option four. Those two options were discussed in regional groups, north, south, east, west, at the last rezoning advisory committee at Thomas Jefferson. Uh, those groups, I think, did a lot of very productive work in surfacing their, uh, best thinking and best responses to options three and four, and providing Mr. Proper with additional guidance, uh, for options five and six, and so on going forward. Uh, he is taking that permission to create that next round of options, uh, for consideration by the rezoning advisory committee, and hopefully we'll have those by next week in time for the next series of meetings that we have. Uh, I know several board members were in attendance, uh, so I will summarize in the following way, but, uh, we'd welcome any additional commentary from, from those that were there. It seemed like there was a fair amount of consensus amongst the R A C members, uh, from the south side on what were the key steps that need to be taken, both in terms of where to make some adjustments to the lines, but also the necessity of, um, another elementary school on the south side. They even indicated some parameters around which neighborhood, uh, which was, I think, very, very helpful. Uh, and, uh, we're gravitating towards a, uh, option where Thompson, uh, was taken out of service, and we had a three middle school zone on the south side, uh, at this time, uh, though with ultimately the idea of, uh, building another middle school on the south side. Uh, uh, on the north side, I think one of the key, uh, pieces of feedback that came up was to explore a pairing on the north side similar to what was proposed, um, in the west end. And that was, in essence, to have Ginter Park and Obama and Holton join together, with possibly, uh, Ginter Park and Obama each serving K through two, with all the kids from those three zones going to Holton for, uh, three through five. And so Mr. Proper's going to model that for the next set of options. Um, on the east end, I would defer to Ms. Burke, because I wasn't able to participate in that group. If she would like to share, or Ms. Cosby may have also been in that group, um, to give a summary of, of what, uh, if anyone wants to know.
For the east end?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yes, we would like to agree.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, oh, it doesn't, I mean, all of us are favored, um, right, it's favored to talk about. Uh, so with the east end, I would just tell you just very broadly, concerns about, uh, making sure that we have a school district that is diverse, first and foremost, um, and, uh, the, there was consensus with the group that Haring did not necessarily, might not be the best option, um, for our parents in the east end right now. So, some of the things that we looked at, we wanted to make sure that we had a lovely new George Mason that's coming on board. There were concerns about the utilization of George Mason being at sixty-four percent right now. One community member articulated that, you know, there were concerns that, um, again, going back to diversity, that it's kind of low, so that if other parents come along, that they can just go onto Mason, and, um, and Ms. Burke can speak to this, who, um, uh, just put some fears to rest that maybe have a lot of new development coming up in this area. And so right now, the utilization is at sixty-four percent, and with the goal, once these, um, projects or, um, housing projects come, um, portable housing, um, projects come up and running, that we would then definitely build the space at George Mason to more than sixty-five, sixty-four percent. Um, but also, when we looked at George Mason, we're also looking at, with Fairfield, we know that Fairfield is at capacity, is at capacity, might be slightly above capacity, and so that was a tremendous concern for the group. So one of the, um, suggestions was to actually take, um, some of Fairfield, move, um, a certain lot to Bellevue. Another consideration was to even look at Woodfield and move some of our Woodfield students to Mason. Um, and then we started to think creatively, uh, because, um, you know, why not have a specialty school in the east end? Um, Woodfield could be one, or perhaps Bellevue could be one, so we started to have those conversations. But the primary takeaway is with this, to make sure that we have diversity, and that we keep that in mind as we're going through the rezoning process. But a very passionate.
Like, and then, uh, in the west end, uh, a lot of discussions around the potential pairing of Fox and Haring, but new ideas were also surfaced, some from public feedback, but also some from the group, potentially, uh, uh, adding even more diversity in that part of the city by, uh, looking at a pairing of Runford and Haring and Fox and Carver. Uh, another potential, uh, was to put all four schools into one zone and figure out a way of distributing the students. Uh, and so, Mr. Proper is modeling those options as well for the next round of feedback, uh, from the rezoning advisory committee. Our next set of meetings are coming up, um, up the rack, are regional meetings. So one focused on the north side, one on the south side, one east end, one west end. Uh, and so all of the R A C members are invited, obviously, to all those meetings, but the focus will be on each of those regions to kind of, uh, suss out any, uh, new feedback from this latest round of options, which again, hopefully will be available next week. Uh, and then our next full rack meeting is in September, where hopefully, uh, we will be at a place where the committee, uh, might begin to become to some consensus, or which direction we'd like to head. Uh, and, uh, if that is the case, I'm working with them to put together, uh, a proposal for the board to consider. Um, if there is still a great deal of disagreement, of course, um, we will take the time we need, uh, to come up with the right plan, uh, for the city. I will just say, I was very encouraged by the discussion, the other guy thought it was very productive, I thought it was very positive. And I think the commitment to increasing diversity across the system is one that is shared broadly, um, by the R A C, and I think folks are being as creative as they possibly can to figure out how do we achieve that, and I am excited, because I actually think we're going to come out on the other side of this as, uh, an example for the Commonwealth, if not the nation, uh, what can be done, uh, to increase diversity, um, to leverage new school buildings, um, and to save the ground, uh, for the buildings and the needs for the future as well. Uh, so a lot of work to do, without, but, uh, I think the good progress is the.
Uh, also, in addition, you did talk about inviting the city sooner rather than later to come and talk about all the new initiatives or having new developments, so that we can look at this through lens of, um, just have a more complete picture. Uh, and also, I'm not sure, um, Mr. Cameron, so we, you know, I, I know for some of us, the pre-K, including that in this session, especially as we talk about Haring, so the transition wouldn't be pre-K, then you have K through two, and then another transition through, uh, those are three new transitions, so if we can include the pre-K data, that would be great.
And on the, yes, um, so we have forward to that, we'll, we'll make sure that that is available. And on the city side, I know Mr. Simmons met with the folks from the city in front, which was three hundred today, and that, he was going to be able to share a little bit about that, but unfortunately, uh, um, had to deal with, uh, uh, family issues. So, um, I am eager to hear from him, I haven't debriefed him yet, um, about that conversation, and then, um, making sure that representatives, um, from those groups are at the next, uh, meeting to be able to speak to those issues. But I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're finally able to get everybody in a room together to talk through all the different aspects.
Ms. Paul. Okay, so, there are many meetings, four mini-meetings in August, but they're just, just for those regions, so. So, so that would mean that the city people then would either need to come to the fourth meeting in August to get that information to the committee, or we would have to wait until September, when we have one meeting to get that information from the city. Now, I'm not sure we can wait until those, uh, brief, uh, uh, so.
We, let me debrief with, with Mr. Simmons. I think there's going to be information that we can share, uh, documents and such with the committee, uh, much sooner. Uh, that's my hope, but I also want to make sure that we physically have somebody there available to answer questions. So, again, let me debrief with, with Mr. Simmons, and then we'll follow up and he can get back out with the R A C about, about mix ups. I just had that chance to do that.
Ms. Paula.
Thank you, Matt Porter, um, and thank you, Mr. Keith, for, for giving a rundown where a lot of the plans were. I didn't hear a, a lot of discussion about, um, about some of the, uh, the parts that represent, which, um, uh, as you might imagine, I'm getting a lot of feedback about, uh, about these types of proposals. Um, in particular about the speed with which we are, uh, trying to address rezon. So, uh, I just want to encourage, um, any, anything we can do to increase, uh, I know we've scheduled a lot of meetings, but to have, uh, as much renewed discussion as possible. I, I'd like to see dates at Carver in particular, I've been getting feedback from our folks in, in the Carver community, and I would like to make sure that we're resultating that effectively. And then there are a couple of things that I think, um, would be helpful for us as we review these plans to, uh, to be able to discuss in a little bit more detail. Uh, one is our, our open enrollment practices in the district. I think that could be a, a key driver to help us address some of our diversity challenges, and one that hasn't really been explored to a large degree. Uh, my, my impression, and I don't have the, the data at hand to, to back this up immediately, is that, uh, that many of our families who have more means are more likely to be able to manage those open enrollment. Uh, so, uh, I want to make sure that we're creating an applicable process and one that helps us address some of our diversity challenges, uh, there. Um, and then, I, I'd also like to get, you know, as we, as we discuss more about, uh, about what it means for our students to transition, what it means for the continuity of school culture and things like that with the pairing models, I would like to get more, uh, information from the administration on the best practices about how these types of approaches can be implemented, whether they've worked well, or they haven't. Uh, I know that, um, when we, when, when I was around, uh, I heard a lot of sort of work for models that actually extended durations, certain students were in one school, so whether you're talking about K eight models and things like that, uh, because it did cut down on those transitions and it did help build continuity in those schools. Um, so I want to make sure that we're balancing the, uh, the potential instructional impacts against, uh, against, um, uh, our, not against, but with our efforts to increase diversity in our schools. I know that there have been some, some proposals, and I'm not sure if these are being drafted by Proper now, that do adjust, uh, boundary lines to, uh, to, uh, negatively increase diversity in some of these schools, that don't necessarily rely on Haring. I want to make sure that those types of, uh, approaches are also being discussed, uh, so that we can continue the way which options may, may, may be most sensible. And then the other, the other thing I realized, or I, I keep in mind as we're going through this, and the reason I caution about rushing all the way and balancing that against the, the fact that some of us have wanted to start tackling the zoning soon, soon, uh, is, uh, is effective implementation, because if we, if we do pair schools, and we don't rule it out, and I'm not saying seamlessly, every, every startup is, we do have its challenges, but we're going to have significant challenges probably when, when the expectation, we're talking about some of these things, when we're talking about how instructions handle, when we're talking about where teachers in place. Uh, and that, those are all issues that require a lot of, of communication, a lot of effort, and, uh, and very well may, in very extent, uh, significantly expenditures. So I want to make sure that we have a command of what that all looks like before we, uh, before we go for it in the lines of hurdles, where we're trying to find out if you should play clarity, uh, and things like that, uh, so then maybe. So, uh, I've been, as you might imagine, I, I've received some, uh, some feedback that I've, I think, more constructive than others. Uh, I've received some, some feedback that was starting in three, in two, in three months of community, uh, but I'm also, I'm receiving a lot of questions about how some can be implemented, can be implemented, such as a timeline, things like that, to make sure that I can do more, uh, some further discussion.
Excuse me. Thank you, um, I, I've given this a long thought as well, um, and, um, no, I just, I'm really impressed at all the work that, that, um, Art Committee members are doing as well, and I'm really thankful, um, seeing all of the research and investigation, and, um, and, you know, I, I, I want, I want to see that work go through. Um, and at the same time, I, um, I feel that our board would be missed if we did not put someone else in place. Um, the fact that we're still throwing out the idea of K eight and, um, you know, uh, different pairings, and, you know, to me indicates that we have this a lot that, um, that's, it's difficult to hone in on, on a plan. Um, and I, I think, you know, I, I feel very, very strongly about the value of diverse school building, and this is an issue I campaign on and I'm not going to let go of, um, because, um, because that's why my kids are here. Um, and so, for that reason, I, I feel we just, we have to get this right. And I've been reading about, uh, Charlotte Mettlingberg, and, um, and, uh, I, I'd like to hear more about how things are coming together there, um, as they've explored different ways of, of, uh, of making more diverse school communities there. Um, but it, it, it seems like there's been some success from, from what I've read, um. But what I recognize is I was doing, uh, readings, that they began this process in twenty fifteen, um, exploring how to make those schools more diverse, and voted on a plan in twenty seventeen. And I worry that we, um, are going to vote for something and then figure it out after, and I think as a district, we have more trust building to do, and what I, 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 I don't want to lose the trust of the community. Um, I don't want to get it wrong, and I think that, um, you know, I mean, moving into a campaign year, it would be so lovely for all of us to campaign again and say, we integrated the schools. Um, but it's not, it's not enough for me to say that I did, because I'm going to be here, I'm not going anywhere. I want more of that headline, and I want it to be right. I want more of that headline, and I want it to be right. Um, I don't, I don't wanna, there are gonna be people that don't agree with this. And, um, we, we need to try, you know, and so pointing fingers at folks that, um, that have anxiety, it's not gonna make it work. And so I, I want to figure out how we can make it work. And there are just, you know, again, as I was reading about the other, um, the other district, there are so many factors and logistics to consider. Um, Mr. Sapini brought up transportation in that meeting, and that's a key. We haven't budgeted for transportation, increased transportation costs in the strategic plan specifically for, um, the pairing options around the table. Um, there is, you know, is this gonna be a school that has one principal? Does it have two principals? How do we name the school? Um, how do we mitigate, uh, issues in terms of transitions? Do we consider moving teachers? Uh, how does the P T A work? Um, and, and these are all the details that I think that once that kind of comes to be, uh, we can bring people along for the ride with us. And, um, and I, I just think that's, that's critically important to do. And I just, I feel particularly uneasy that, um, you know, we, we are under the gun at this point to, um, to make these big decisions, and, um, it feels just like a, a, it feels like a gamble. Um, the other thing that makes, uh, that I think is important to consider is that, you know, that we read the paper about this rezoning process, the attention has been so much on what's happening north of the river. And, um, and we're, we're not talking as much about what's going on south of the river. You know, that, that we agreed that when we built this big school for Green, we didn't wanna have a thousand kids in the school, and yet we've got that on the table with nine hundred kids in the school. Um, we need another school, and, um, and, and, and we need to ensure that we give the process of figuring out where that other school is going to go, um, you know, how we can mitigate those overcrowding issues, uh, and transportation are, 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 are of critical importance. And I don't think should be overshadowed by, um, uh, by what is a topic that obviously can gather, gather headlines. I think both things are of critical importance. So, um, so my ask is that the board consider, um, looking at our priorities for rezoning, um, and, and, and taking a very, uh, uh, earnest and realistic approach to how, um, what we can accomplish between now and the start of the twenty twenty school year, um, so that we can accomplish what we have to do and, um, and do that right, and, um, and then make these other decisions with the community along the ride, you know, along with us, and, um, and perhaps less anxiety because they know that, um, we'll be making decisions, uh, you know, intentionally and, um, and be able to communicate those, those ideas as we go. Oh, okay. Mr. Yerkes?
I think, Madam Parker, I most admire and respect my, uh, both of my colleagues seated, seated to my right, um, who are then, um, can convey the movements, but, uh, I think I fundamentally disagree on this, specifically because I think we need to go all in. And it's why I've been disappointed in the most modest rezoning options that have materialized to date. And candidly, I think the pairing is rather contrived and doesn't go nearly far enough. Instead, I think, I think Tom downstairs said it well. My proposal, which I formally introduce in this evening, is audacious. It is audacious to propose that students irrespective of their zip code or really reside, would have access to the very best education. It is audacious to actually there's been a lot of conversation around this room relative to equity. And I think we have an opportunity relative to rezoning to do something really big and allow for our students to attend a school irrespective of where they reside, irrespective of their zip code, leverage open enrollment. Candidly, some of the conversation that has materialized has been disappointing because frankly, the last thing that I would ever vote for is something that reduces or diminishes parental choice. Instead, we should be moving in the opposite direction. So, uh, each of my colleagues have the proposals that, uh, that I've drafted for the committee and for the board's consideration and review, and it does all those things. Specifically, it would eliminate place of residence. It would eliminate place of residence altogether as it relates to where a student would attend school, but instead it allowed parents to select those choices. Now, uh, yes, uh, this plan would cost a lot of money, I'm really candid about that. Uh, I think the only way to do it and to do it with a straight face is to recognize what our consultant has apparently not, perhaps he's from, because he's out, from out of state, but we have too many school buildings for too few schoolchildren, and it's costing us a fortune, and we have to consolidate it. We should do it now as part of rezoning. Uh, yes, there will be, uh, look, change is difficult, I get that. But if we're serious about doing something all in as it relates to equity, then I would encourage us to adopt, but candidly, our strategic plan calls for, pertinent to secondary schools. We use a group of knowledge as part range for R P S that we want for pathways in middle and high schools. The only way that I know to do that is to provide, is to provide all our students access to schools irrespective of where in the city that they're located. And to do it means, yes, uh, more than doubling our six point four million of transportation budget. Uh, I'm not going to filibuster that, be highly rude and inappropriate, um, but I do pray that this board, that the committee, this community will seriously consider a plan. It doesn't need to be my plan, I don't care, uh, whose plan it is, but a, a plan that does increase or augment parental choice and allow persons irrespective of their brown, black, white, or how much money their household earns to, to attend the school of their choice. Thank you, Madam Parker.
Ms. Burks, thank you, Madam. Um, Clark?
Well, I think the reason we talked about integration, we talked about diversity, I'm thinking along the lines of what works in the west end may not work in the east end, or what works in the north side may not work in the south side, because each area has its own special community. This also goes back to the entire housing plan for the city originally, which is something we've been heard. We've, we've been heard to this. So I, I heard this evening, and I heard in the community as well, we in east end are speaking about this and have lots of questions. Um, we need to take our time, we need to take our time. We, I'm glad that they're, I'm here tonight that there's flexibility before we move on. I don't wanna repeat what our witness as a child was busting in integration. We talk about diversity, but let's talk about diversity beyond race. Let's talk about diversity in terms of, uh, socioeconomic status. Let's be mindful that as we pair or don't pair or heat neighborhoods or freedom of choice is what you're speaking of. That's just what it is, yeah, freedom of choice, been, been there, done that. Um, there isn't a great fix, and this is a massive undertaking. Then I think in terms of, let's say you do have, choose where you want to go, it doesn't matter if it's in code. Is my school in the south side, does my school on the south side have the same resources as the school in east end? So as we move children about, all about, let's say parents are not looking at color, they're not looking at, uh, who lives where. But why send your child to a school on one side where the place where your child is now has all the different parenting built up? So as we move children about, we, we, as a board, I think, need to make sure that that equitable piece is, is listed. If there's a strong after-school program because of criminal environment at this school, and you're gonna move to another school because of the rezoning piece, we have a lot of pieces here to think of. So it goes beyond race, it goes beyond socioeconomic. Then I think about specialty schools, open, community, Blackwell Elementary, the numbers are tuned up. We haven't seen anything else expanding those programs. They need to be, uh, more diverse because they're handpicked to go to those schools. So we need to give more children, more options to be able to, I want to attend community because I can get more hours ahead of myself because of how the curriculum is set up before moving on to college, if that's where I decide to go. So we haven't talked about middle schools or high schools, everything's fallen on elementary. But we also know that the, the challenging part when you come to schools, that is our middle schools. That's when we lose our children. So I just want us to be very mindful of beyond the integration piece. And I'll talk about that after the meeting, all right? Because that can be, moving children around in that manner can be very, very hurtful. And I agree that we have to really set the stage for that. Some people are more comfortable in their immediate communities, so how do we bridge that gap? What about the transportation piece? We talked about the east end, we talked about Woodville Court, because Woodville Court was closed. So we talked about moving the children from Woodville Court, because Fairfield has their own school, they go to Fairfield, Fairfield Court Elementary. Woodville has Crane Court, and they go to Woodville. But now we have Woodville, because their school was not aware that Woodville should have been. So we're thinking if we move this group of children from Woodville to George Wrayson to a nice, beautiful new school, hopefully that will raise self-esteem as well. But I, I just want us to take our time, I don't wanna repeat history in such a negative way. Uh, and I'm not saying it's negative, I think everybody on the committees, I mean, I was so impressed with how hard people are working, how committed they are, how much research is going into place. But I also want us to think in terms of, Richmond did it before, bused children from south side to Churchill. From where Green Elementary is, children were, were over that side there that was basically whites, they bused them to Churchill. Then from another side of north side, they bused Howard Springs, Howard Park, excuse me, they bused them to Mary Market. Go back to Mary Market, it was busted, uh, Howard Park. All right, so this, I just want us to be mindful of removing choo- I've already said removing children, removing folk children. And that's, those are stars that can be left there indefinitely, so it needs to be cushioned. It's not gonna be everybody's needs, but we also need to hear from our children. Because children are fine until adults get in the mix. They really are. Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Well, I'll just say this to you, Jonathan. I already told you that I, I wish you had come to me as person on the committee or somebody else, and we had this discussion. Uh, when I look into your proposal, we're gonna close Henderson, and we have too many children to fit. Even though they're not that many, the capacity of other middle schools don't take those kids. Same thing is true of Swanspurles. Swanspurle's a small school, but there's no place to put those children if we close it. 'Cause all those other schools over there outside don't have the capacity. Blackwell has some capacity, but one of the things we're looking at doing is trying to relieve, you know, Westover Hill, about putting some of those kids they took away in two thousand thirteen for whatever reason. And I haven't thought about what reason they took kids out of Westover Hill, out of Blackwell, sent them to Westover Hill. We can move some of those kids back to Blackwell. There was some discussion about moving some kids, you know, from Broad Rock to Oak Grove, from Oak Grove to Blackwell, because there's so much crowding in Broad Rock, we can't fix it with a thousand-person school. Uh, I also remind everyone that we're looking at numbers from October last year. And I believe we all sat here and listened to people from Bouchal tell us they had sixty kids, and then most of whom did not speak English after Christmas break last year. I can guarantee you there were also some elementary kids. If they got sixty elementary school kids at Bouchal, then we got some elementary kids that came in after winter break. We cannot close a school in south side and absorb those students in our other schools over there. And, and we looked at Fisher, we looked at, uh, Southampton, unless we could move Southampton, pick Southampton and put it somewhere else, then maybe we could make it work, but we cannot make it work. It's like Reed, the kids across the street from Reed are Boston Miles Jones. We talk about walkability, we have all these parents so concerned about walkability in the, in the museum district, and then, okay, I get it, I walked in, I walked the box many years ago. But kids who live across the street from Reed are Boston Miles Jones because there's not room for them at Reed, and Reed is right on the line, just like Southampton is. It's a complicated thing. I wish that we could make this perfect. I wish that every kid could go to exactly the school they wanna go to, and every parent could have that exact, you know, perfect little neighborhood school that they all wanna have. But the way, when you look at where the kids are, and where the schools are, and where the numbers are, we can't just say, well, we, we, we have schools that are empty, so let's close them, but where are we with those kids? When I look at the numbers of kids northern the river, we close Henderson, there's not room in Hill and Bedford and Alhoket with the kids at Henderson. So where are they gonna go? And then if we say, well, if we just do a lottery system, and they get to pick where they go. Well, if Henderson's closed, there's still not choices enough to put all those schools in. And now what happens to the school that nobody picks? So those, those are the kids that live in that zone, they have to go to that school they didn't get their lottery pick? I'm just, I, I understand, you know, freedom of choice, so it did sound good, didn't it? But it never was, and I don't think this will do it. I, I, I agree that we have issues. We really have issues with this, you know, option to pick your school. And that is part of the reason why we have the crowding in some of the, you know, elite schools, uh, because we've let kids opt to go there. But I will also tell you that if we went all the kids from south side who opted to go to T J and opted to go to Hill and Bedford, and said, yeah, you have to go back to your zone school, we'd be even more overcrowded. I mean, parents are picking, and I agree, it's the parents that can afford to transport them. I don't know how we fix that. But I don't think it's by saying, well, everybody picks and we transport them all, but in the meantime, we close more schools. Because then there's not room for everybody. Something more creative maybe with Henderson. I've talked about, you know, K eight school, but I don't think we're there yet, 'cause that, that would have to take a lot of money to make Henderson be what it isn't. And we have so many needs in our existing schools in terms of our limited funding. We need that new school on south side, we need a new Woodville, 'cause Woodville's in such terrible condition. We need a new George Wray. So that doesn't leave us a lot of money to, to do a whole lot of magic renovations to some of these other schools. So I'm sorry, Jonathan, I wish I could support your plan, but I'm sorry, I just can't, it leaves none of this structure.
Dr. Sapini?
I will debrief. You know, I don't know where we turn, but you know, the, the most, two of the most important things about this rezoning is releasing the overcrowding on the south side. Other than that, every school needs to be adapted to me. So if we improve the schools, then no one has to go anywhere. But the overcrowding is ridiculous. Now, I don't know how anyone's gonna think. Sometimes it seems like we're going backwards, but there is reason. for various reasons. But the most important thing is improving all the schools. That's it. Support our students on South Side by giving it to relief. Support our, you know, ESL students. And that's it. Can we be on that?
Ms. Bur, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Calzey, and then, uh, Mr. Hamers is not around yet, of course.
Uh, thank you. I was just thinking about what you stated, uh, Ms. Rogers stated. We think in terms of Henderson. The new development on, um, Brook Road, three hundred and some odd townhouses. That's what I may need to hear from the city. Because Henderson may end up in the next year or two. I think they've already opened, but receiving people. That's a massive, on Brook Road and, uh, what's that? West for that, that's a massive, um... So, Henderson next year this time may be overcrowded. But I do agree with what Dr. Sapien stated along the lines of let's, let's ensure we get South Side straight first. Because we shouldn't have all those trailers and children. I, I know it's like to be in a trailer because we started out that way in the East End and it's, it's not conducive, no matter how well we decorate it. It's just not right. But I do hope that we keep in mind, uh, first relieving that enrollment overcrowding and then make sure our schools are all up to par. What's in the East End should be in the West End. What's in the West End should be in North Side. Let's work through that, we say. Otherwise, I don't want us to get away from, yes, it is time for us to make a change. But I also want us to be mindful of student achievement number one. So, no matter what school a child is in, he or she should have the correct resources to be successful. And if I'm going to move my child from North Side and I choose to go to the new George Mason for whatever reason or, you know how things happen if people get opportunities to be flexible. That the same thing is in one area as in another area. That's my main concern. But no, no school should be overcrowded. And that, when we think in terms of that person here, as I stated earlier, this is the socioeconomic piece as well as making sure our ESL children have what they're supposed to have right now, they're in need. Our children of color, period, and the black median, then above, and there's some still don't have all the resources they should have. So, uh, yes, we do it better when we do it together. However, I think we need to make sure our foundation is strong first. Otherwise, we will perish.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, yes, I echo everything Ms. Thompson said because it's only, it's something that just really, it struck me when she mentioned the word elite schools. And I'm like, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking of this stuff." I'm sorry. I was just, and it's just a reality that people do, you know, less, uh, reception. And, um, then I started thinking of a time when, and if you go back some years and you look at that SOL data, I just remember Fairfield Court Elementary. You couldn't tell Fairfield's data from Mary Monford and this Fairfield efforts and their innovation and the academic achievement that really put our test on the map nationally. You couldn't, you go back, I mean, I challenge anyone, go back and look to past, um, twenty, um, ten to look at that data. And so, yes, we have to start to make, we have to make sure that all of our schools are, can we use that word? Equity and, um, that are equitable, yeah. And that every, all of them have resources and there's something, and there's enrichment opportunity for all. And, you know, the curriculum is robust and I know Dr. Ed is working hard at that. And so, that's what we do. We have to make sure we have that so that, so that, you know, the people aren't clamoring for, for one side of town or what have you. But I think all this also goes back to Ms. John, you can talk about diversity. To me, it's not a destination. It is something that is just, is, in my mind, and this is just my mind. It's just, it's, it's just a must. It's not a goal. It's just a must and it's needed. Uh, and so, I, this goes back to what Ms. Gibson was talking about in fifteen, this was the meeting over, saying with, we do have to give this committee, we do have to narrow, I think, the, because the committee wants to, they're confused like, "Oh, my God, we have to make sure it's diverse and make sure we're leading this." And we have to make sure, and we gave so many goals and they are such ambitious goals and they're the right goals. But perhaps we need to come together and think what goals right now. And have this to speak that, uh, as you talk about maybe extending the process, what goals right now? As we're working through everything else to make sure all of our schools are top-tier schools. All of our schools offer something special. So, they're not, you know, and even looking at the open enrollment process, you know, what does that look like? So, do we continue with it as it is, it's flawed? Do we make sure that we pump more resources into transportation? So, there's several, to me, several, um, problems that we have to look at. But really, dear committee, because I think the committee is working extremely hard. People in the community are working very hard and sort of looking at, responding to surveys and getting this feedback and, um, but I, I do think we do have to narrow our expectations somewhat to about realistic goals within the timetable that we set for ourselves right now.
Ms. Gibson, Mr. Bobble, Mr. Hamers?
Thank you. Um, so, um, so just to, um, you know, speak to, uh, Mr. Young's proposal, um, you know, I, I, I just want to, you know, give a lot of quote to that. Um, and that is, I, I think it's important to emphasize that these are not private institutions. These are public schools. And so, um, so, you know, I understand that, you know, that pizza place rises to the top. Um, but that model has not worked in, 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 in the school system. Um, and that's been showed, uh, you know, in city after city that, that choice as, as a driver does not work to, uh, to, to transform schools as some had hoped. Um, and I also think it's important to emphasize, uh, um, what, uh, uh, Ms. Burkin said. And that is that, um, it's been done before. And, uh, and I, I think it's especially important to emphasize that it was done before and that it's freedom of choice, um, in, in hopes to do exactly the opposite of what we are talking about doing today. Um, it was essentially a stall tactic, uh, to diversify schools and their ground versus the board of education. And, um, and unfortunately, we are today talking about the vestiges of what we still have thanks to freedom of choice and, um, and, and that, that, that process. And so, um, so I, 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 this, this reading about all of those failures is why, again, I, I just think we, 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 we need to do it right. And, um, and so, and, and I also think we're doing so much right now and I want to make sure that we're considering the overlap, uh, all of our strategic plan pieces. Um, because we are talking about specialty schools and we are talking about the open enrollment process and the tool for that. Um, and so, uh, and we are talking about transportation. And so, you know, how do all of those things overlap and affect this and, and they all do? And so, um, and so I, I think it's really critical that we, um, put more, uh, detail in place about what these things are looking like and how they're going to work so that they can work, um, there's a, you know, a symphony in how these things come together and form, um, our decision process. Um, so I, I, I'd like to then get a sense from my colleagues, um, you know, where we, you know, in terms of, we voted on, on, on the goals. Um, and, uh, so i- is there interest in, in this evening? Because I, I, you know, I don't want to stall. So, there's two things that I'd like to see happen and I'd like to see that we give the committee clear direction. Um, and, uh, and, and the second is, uh, I, I don't, I, I want to continue to do the work that we've begun as it pertains to diverse school communities. Um, I'd like to, I would like to look at more research. I'd like to see other examples. Um, I want to talk more specifically about what, um, you know, what the higher schools could look like and how that would work. So, I want all of that to continue. Um, while we also are focused on doing what we have to do as it pertains to overcrowding. Um, and, um, the other piece, and, you know, this is where you all may disagree, but, you know, at the same time, today, council is talking about this Coliseum project. And for me, um, I think as a board member, I feel very strongly that before any development happens in the city, we need to make sure at the very least, we get those two additional schools that were part of the first base of our plan. Um, and so, I also think it's worth revisiting the board taking a position, perhaps to that end, to say that, um, that these new buildings should come first. Um, and, and perhaps we, we, we finalize a plan, what those two are. Maybe it's not the same two schools that we began the process with now that we are looking more specifically at, um, overcrowding. I, I don't know, but I, I think that, um, it's, it is very clear, it is very important that we prioritize what these new building needs are right now. Um, I think in, you know, in light of that Coliseum piece, there is a sign on this there that I think is important for the board to take a position on. Um, I'd like to continue to move forward in terms of, um, of, uh, visualizing and bring to life and, 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 and all the other things that pertain to creating diverse school communities and then doing the work that we have to do to ensure that we have a plan in place for the new schools that are going to be built and to address overcrowding to the best of our ability right now.
Thank you, Matt Ward. Um, I, I think I already agree with, uh, with what Ms. Gibson said. I also, um, I also think just when it comes to the rezoning piece in particular, without getting into the Coliseum facilities debate so much, although I agree we should get those schools before, before they Coliseum's. But, um, it's, it's that, I, I do want to make sure that, that we are being very intentional, um, in our efforts to diversify our schools. And it's, uh, it's really disheartening to know that we are more segregated now than we were in the seventies. Um, and a lot of that was because of white fear. People, um, going to suburbs, wanting to fly to the suburbs. Um, and it's, it's still unfortunate to hear the types of segments, I think, uh, that, that they're, they're maybe, maybe available a little bit, a little bit differently in some circumstances. But what's apparent to me is that we've had this problem for multiple generations now. Um, I don't think it's, it's an issue, an issue that we can be able to entirely fix by November. Uh, so my hope is that we can start talking about longer-term strategies to diversify our schools. Um, we know it's, it's, there goes the Milkenbee Bradley case, uh, Supreme Court case that, uh, that won't allow, prohibits, uh, prohibited desegregation across, um, across, uh, certain political boundaries. Um, but, you know, my question is, can we be looking at efforts to pair with other school divisions to see if we can help increase diversity? Can we be looking at, uh, at whether, whether our, uh, whether future, um, specialty schools can play a role in helping to drive it? Uh, so, you know, Charlotte Eckenberg, which Ms. Gibson brought up earlier, was viewed as a model in a lot of ways for, uh, for how desegregation efforts could work effectively because there was regional cooperation. Um, and I want to make sure that we're exploring all those types of options with, with longer-term plans. But I still think, even if we do narrow down our diversity, or narrow down our goals for, uh, for our rezoning committee, that we should still be taking effort to increase diversity in all of our schools. And that's not something that we should, uh, we should be letting fall away aside by any special imagination.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I hear exactly what you're saying, Ms. Barlow. And I don't know if we can do it in this setting or we have another meeting that where we specifically say, "Okay, these are some of the things that we feel like." And, I mean, and having a conversation with the committee, I'm just trying to think through the process. So, if we know diversity, yes, that is still a goal. But if we're saying, "You know what, we might not be able to fix this come November." So, what can be done realistically? Prioritizing schools better, I guess, yes, and then what we did. It took clear, I think that's the, I think that's the point that we're doing right now. And I don't know, um, how to do that, maybe a plan, maybe it's, okay, look, for our committee, this is the, because many people talk, they, they ask the question, "What can you, what's, what's, what's top?" You know, they do within the committee structure. And it's, "Okay, these are the things you want to look at for right now." No, but I don't know. And then, as we continue, committee, if you don't mind extending your services with us, this is what I want to look at at this point. I mean, you know, to put a timeline as we prioritize, if that makes sense. But I do think it's going to require the board, not just members of the board, the entire board having this conversation. If that's an administration, if that sounds possible.
I just want to wait until you.
I'm done.
Um, so, a lot of great conversations that I've had, a lot to process. Um, just a few concluding thoughts. Uh, one, um, I do think we should continue to move forward as, as we are. Uh, any deadlines we have are self-imposed deadlines and they can be shifted as necessary. Uh, but I think the committee is doing good work and we should continue on that front. And I think we should see kind of where the committee is, kind of that September meeting and get a sense from them about, uh, is there an emerging consensus or is there still a great deal of disagreement that would warrant, you know, much lengthier discussion? Uh, so that's one. Two, uh, I certainly agree that there are many things to, uh, work through as it pertains to all aspects of the emerging proposals, transportation, lots of details with preparing options and whatnot. Things need to be costed out and whatnot. Uh, as a matter of expediency, though, I'm not asked the administration, uh, to go down that path until we have a little bit more clarity of where is the, where is the rezoning committee heading? Uh, because there's a great deal of work, um, to suss out all these details and, uh, I want the administration focused on opening the school right now. Uh, so that's just a, a second thought, but I agree, there's a lot to be worked out. Third thought on the prioritization. You know, I've heard this, um, from some committee members as well. Um, and if the board sees fit to do a ranking of the goals, uh, uh, of course, we would, we would honor that. My one word for, one thing to consider is, I think this is less, um, that the goals are in conflict, but rather that certain parts of the city are better, uh, uh, certain goals apply to certain parts of the city more than others. For example, the South Side is overcrowded. We all know. Uh, the North Side, relatively speaking, is less. So, alleviating overcrowding is really probably goal number one on the South Side, not so much on the North Side. Um, and so, that's why I think ranking the goals as a division isn't necessarily helpful because everything doesn't apply equally. And it's, we've heard this from the RAC members themselves, the things that are most important in a very sparse while I'm talking about the South Side. As we have all shared, and I want to make sure that the public hears this clearly, rezoning will not solve the overcrowding on the South Side. It won't. Unless you bused children from the South Side to the North Side. Now, I haven't heard anyone say that that is a good option and I'm not putting it forth to, all I'm saying is absent that- All I'm saying is absent that, there is literally not enough existing school space to get rid of all the trailers I brought back and green and so on and so forth. It just isn't there. The zone has drawn lines eighty-seven different ways, I saw her. It just isn't enough. And so that's why I think coming out of this process, I think a lot of the key pieces, and I really appreciate the committee's work on this, to say, we need a new school, there's where it should be. So I think, I think that's been a really powerful thing to hear from the, from the committee members themselves. Anyway, back to the ranking, I just want folks, as I've sat at these meetings, I think there's, you know, there are region specific issues and then obviously there are our divisional differences. So could we do this, could we let the RAC regional meetings occur? We kind of see where, where things are and then I will come back and, and report on the nineteenth, kind of see where we are and figure out what next steps are appropriate. I'm hesitant to kind of shift anything right now, just because I think they're developing some momentum and cohesion as a group. I'd like to just let that, let them play that out a little bit more.
I agree in terms of having been actively engaged with the committee, they are committed. And the, they're people from the community, it's a well diverse group. Another person that's coming in is welcome to observe. So if those persons have the buy-in, which they do, they may be able to solve what we're trying to brainstorm here at this table. And I would hate to stop, I don't want to stop that flow, that energy. If they, I'm in full agreement with moving forward until September to see what happens. And hopefully they will continue, maybe others will join. We also must be mindful of, that's an opportunity to not come and cop that. Jonathan talks about that often, not working top down. These are folk who are in the communities, have children, they just reflect on their own experiences as well. So I'm in full agreement with believing as it is right now, look away in the big picture. And then in September, if we have to go back to the drawing board, which now I'm doing, we'll just do it right. But I'm, I'm comfortable and I respect what the board has done. It was so, it was hot at TJ, it was close at TJ. People, opinions and experiences different and it was okay. That's true collaboration. And then in the end you reach consensus, whereas nobody loses. So I hope that we can get to that part through this committee.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, so when you say we until September, can you clarify when you mean?
We have the next full rezoning committee meeting in September. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's sort of the after the start of school. We have a series of meetings between now and then and so, you know, I would love to give the committee time to continue to build on the momentum and the cohesion that Ms. Burke and Scott and some of them have spoken about. Because I do think, I think Ms. Burke said something very powerful. They are coming up with solutions that none of us has thought of. And I think that's the power of the committee. It truly does reflect a broad cross-section of the city. And it's really, it was a, sorry. It's a very inspiring thing to see everybody huddled around the table, looking block by block, talking about this development here or this shopping center there or why traversing this road is a bad idea. And I mean, it's a very, it's a very powerful process. And so I do think they are, I do think they're making headway. And I think by that September meeting, we'll have kind of a sense of where they are and what are the key outstanding issues. And then I think the board would be in a position to be able to say, yeah, this feels like the right direction, let's keep going down this path. Or we feel like we're missing a big piece here or a big piece there.
Yeah, I guess the, thank you, Mr. Cameron. So I think the thing I'm worried about is I look at the number of meetings that we're having with the community, with the region specific meetings and everything of that nature. And what I'm worried about is that people will feel that, that their time may be wasted or may not be used as effectively. I mean, I, I still think that if we provide additional guidance, they're going to be looking at these maps by block, by block and assessing against their priorities and that's very important. I mean, the, the work is going to be the same, I guess, if we, if we delay a month when we hope to have some plans in place by November and the board does, does want to, to make some changes. I, you know, I don't want, I don't want things to be, I don't want, I don't want people to be even more upset because they put a time in the plans that didn't reflect what exactly we intended to implement.
I completely understand that. If the board would like to weigh in this evening and provide additional guidance, I would gladly bring that to the committee. I just don't know exactly what that looks like. I don't know what, um, there's no way to make this simple. It's complex, everything is inter tangled. But if the board wants to have a discussion tonight and say, we want committee to know that the number one thing is this and the number two thing is that, of course, I'm glad to bring that back to the committee. From like earlier comment about different regions and different issues, I just don't know if that actually gives them more guidance. But if that's a discussion the board would like to have this evening, you know, then if, if we're gonna do it, then you should do it tonight or let things continue to move as I think they are. I think folks are, again, I think folks who were at the meeting can chime in. It really was a very productive, and that doesn't mean polyannaish, as, as Ms. Burke said, there was disagreement. But I do think folks are beginning to figure out this for us.
I want to talk about this. Okay, the, we have the, the four committee meetings, the regional ones, are after our next meeting. And we have both meetings in September before the full committee meeting. So as far as getting something back from them, the way it is currently scheduled, and that is not to say it can't be changed, because we don't have Mr. Simmons here, we'll have to talk to Mr. Prober. But as it is currently scheduled, it is scheduled for the nineteenth of September. So that's after our September meeting. So we might want to try and move it so that we do get feedback from the full committee before at least the second meeting in September. Especially since our next August meeting is also before the zone meeting. So I just wanted to bring that up.
And I'd be glad to go back and see if it's possible to move that September meeting up a little bit, possibly.
I guess where I'm coming from is this is that we've all set our own views, that we want to get it right. We want to make sure this is done right, you know, in terms of diversity. We want to, we don't want to go out to soap and, and we're, you know, it's crunch time. So if we feel that way and we think that we might not get this right within such a short period of time, I guess, all I'm saying is that, okay, all right, committee members, okay, regionally, if it works best for you, over the south side, yes, the priority is over, you know, to relieve overcrowding, yes. But I, I, I guess what I've taken away and how, you know, from this conversation is that we really feel that we don't want to rush, especially when it comes to certain issues, the diversity that we feel is that it cannot be done in a, in this very short window. And to give license to the committee, hey, we recognize that at least this part might not solve by November. Of these new schools, I don't know, but I, I don't know, I don't want that, it's not my work. That's what I'm saying.
Again, if I may, again, all of the deadlines we have are self-imposed, again, so they can be changed. I do think the committee has some momentum and I'd like to have them sort of continue down that path. And if, you know, comes September, the board feels that whatever solutions they have around diversity need more time, and remember, we're not making any decisions in September, we were talking about November and December. Okay, so be it and then we extend, extend the timeline. I do worry a little bit on the diversity question that, um, that delay can turn into never happening. And I, I don't say that to say that that's anyone's intention, I just think that it's hard to do. And it's certainly complicated, I can see all of that. But I do think we should at least for now, continue to push forward, see where the committee is. And they may feel they have the right plan, but there should be a phase implementation, right? Just because the board could vote on a plan in November, doesn't all have to go into effect in the fall of twenty. Maybe something goes into effect in fall twenty and somebody goes into effect fall twenty-one. I do think though, continuing to push forward to get to a plan, assuming people feel it's a good plan, not just to have it. I think would serve us and the, and the community well. Again, the timeline of implementation, I think that's an important discussion. But I do think getting to a place where families in the community has a sense of what the plan is over the next several months is ideal. And if we can't, because we feel that it needs more time, it needs to happen. But I, I, for now, I feel like we should continue to push.
Ms. Gibson, and after this, you do all, you all do have more items on the agenda, so we need to move forward. So Ms. Gibson will have the last comment, please.
Thank you. So, you know, the, the, the design of the plan and implementation, they're not, there's, it's not two separate things, because it's all about, the success of it is all about buy-in. And, and so I, I, it, it sounds like we are all in agreement about taking the time that it needs and yet, and yet I feel like we're, we're stumbling on how to make that happen. I, I, I think that ultimately the committee is doing the work that we tasked them to do. And I, I personally expressed hesitation about the goals that we adopted in the beginning because they were so broad and, and, and the conversations that I heard from the committee was just that. And so I, I, you know, whether or not the, the priorities are organized by region, you know, I think that we are taking, you know, we're taking on, and I worry that we're taking on more than we can chew. And also they're just not setting ourselves up for success. So I, I do think that it's possible to continue the work of the committee and, and perhaps design a new committee that is focused on diversity potentially and, and proceeding kind of in that fashion. I, you know, I, I, and I think, the other, the other thing I think that we're missing from this conversation is, is actual research and, and examples. You know, we have not heard from proper what the timeline typically looks for. I, I'd like to hear what that is, if you promise additional research. I'd like to see if this board is open to, perhaps, uh, perhaps taking the approach of, of having another discussion of priorities at our next school board meeting. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm just not sure what, what the commu, what the community is looking at. And if, if we're not, we're not all on the same page on, on what it is we're, we're exactly trying to accomplish in the timeframe that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next item in this file, once you will all receive a letter of recognition of understanding of the Virginia Department of Education.
A very quick update on our most recent meeting with the Virginia Department of Education on our corrective action plan. We met on July twenty-ninth, or just about the entire day. The agenda was uploaded to board docs. And the line of share of the meeting was about that first line, the CAP essential actions, particularly as they pertain to strategic plan and implementation thereof. This is the binder documentation that we shared with the state, so each time that we meet, we prepare something like this. So as to not kill trees, we did not make nine for the board, but glad to pass it around. It is largely or entirely items you have all already seen before. The strategic plan, the process we went to put it together, the feedback, engagement sessions, our efforts to set goals, which we presented to the board, and a little bit of discussion around, as we've had here, implementation metrics and things of that nature. And so it was a very positive meeting. I think the VDOE was pleased with the progress on, in these key essential actions of the corrective action plan. Of note, I think they were particularly pleased to see our budgeting efforts aligning to the strategic plan where oftentimes they see in school divisions where a plan is developed and then it kind of sits on a shelf and nothing really happens with it. And I think they were pleased to see that it was driving a lot of the work that we're doing this year and beyond.
Ms. Gibson?
Um, so is this the complete corrective action plan draft for leadership and governance?
No, I think it's certainly the social actions.
So, so, because when I reviewed, I didn't see, so, you know, obviously the board is the governing body of the school board, of the, of the school system, but I didn't see the school board listed anywhere on this document.
I'm sorry. Sure.
So when the cap was first created and there was transition work of the VDOE, we immediately pressed pause, I guess, on, since we were working with the board until more time to bed and place. So that was not included in the document.
Right. But I think that, I think that we're looking at now, because there are governance items that should be included in the corrective action plan.
Well, just, there's a couple of, so one, this is the corrective action plan that, that this board has adopted and the Virginia State Board of Education has adopted. So unless we reopen the CAP process, which would be a lengthy one, this, this is the.
this, this is the approved CAP by this body and by, by the VDOE. There's nothing in the CAP which diminishes in any way the school board's statutory authority overriding the school system. It merely is a word plan. Um, that we have agreed to with the state in terms of implementation on the corrective action that we intend to take. But if this board wants to reopen the CAP, um, that is certainly, uh, their pleasure. I would, I would strongly advocate it to do that.
Mrs. Burke? I haven't had the opportunity at a different level to work through this previously when we were at school improvement many years ago. Um, the board's responsibility overall is to make sure that, uh, hopefully we'll get off, updates often. To make sure that it's flowed, it's listed, but it's the responsibility of the administration to make sure this work is done. But I would simply to, uh, monitor and, from across the board oversee to make sure we get our reports out every step. But, uh, I've had, the call previously, had the board listed in terms of, uh, making sure this work is done. The board's not responsible to use to make sure that it's followed through, it's listed. Which will follow through the state department expects the administration to do that even in the administration. So I might agree with Adam, they, uh, some more pieces of this stuff, but it's a given that we should monitor this.
Ms. Burke? Um, I, I agree, I mean, I understand, there was a piece that's missing, I don't know when we, because it was first presented to us when we started, when we embarked on this, and it said, school governance. And so I don't know what happened to that piece. Um, but there, the original, this, it just included the government. Um, and when we first started talking about it, they were like, maybe we take, we have to back and then cut it for the recognition. Um, but it wasn't that necessarily about the monitoring of this piece of it. But it was about school governance and about this. Um, because of the transition, you did not give them tools. I don't know if that's something that we go back to. Um, but there was a piece, yeah, there was a piece.
You're definitely right, Ms. Burke. The, um, the initial draft said, under leadership and governance, which we had from an early iteration on May twenty ninth, it said, at the time of the divisional level review, March twenty seventeen, all members of the Richland City School Board were newly elected. The board governance components evaluation tool will be completed in March twenty eighteen, which did not happen. Additional essential amendments may be required.
Okay, next item is five, zero five, received for first reading title points. Good evening.
As you all know, uh, each year, we, um, are eligible to receive allocations from federal funding based on, um, uh, our poverty rate and other factors such as ESL enrollment and the like. Um, there are, we do these applications each year. Uh, they are first approved by the board. They are then sent to the, uh, State Department of Education and they are then reviewed and approved. And once approved, we can then encumber those funds. Um, the, there are four applications. Title one is the, uh, one that is probably the most discussed and the largest, uh, fund. I, I listed the allocations here. Um, generally, we did see some increases, um, from title one and in particular, uh, title two and four had small increases, title three stayed flat, although that number may adjust once the ESL count, um, is formally updated in the fall. Uh, so we're not yet sure, but that number may adjust and we may see an addition. Additionally, um, as the state allocates funds from time to time, we'll receive an additional increase depending on how other divisions use their funds and, um, we make amendments based on, uh, when the, when that comes up. These plans, um, title one in particular is driven by each school's school-wide plan, school development plan based on their data. And then how they choose to use those funds are then incorporated into our division-wide plan. Uh, we also have something called a division set aside where we allocate funds for division-wide efforts. Um, each of these funds have very specific rules that guide the use of their funds. These funds are meant to supplement, not supplant the district's responsibility to provide a free and perfect public education. Um, and so, uh, we made, we developed the applications with those things in mind. So for each title application, I provided a summary of where the dollars go. You can see the specific breakdown in the, um, applications that are also on board docs. And, um, and I've also provided highlights for each title application. Um, so in terms of our title one usage, the largest, um, the largest category here is personnel benefits in the form of what we currently talk, uh, call title one reading or title one math teachers. Um, or early, um, instructional assistance at our title one schools. This, uh, we also, this is the fund that helps us provide, uh, a series of instruction, additional instructional materials in the form of literacy and mathematics instruction, uh, provide paid for teacher division-wide professional development for teachers or school principals to attend conferences as needed. Uh, typically schools included their school-wide, uh, requests for technology and technology services. So this is where we fund many of our instructional technology programs that, um, supplement the school day such as, uh, iReady or Explore, Gizmos are things that you've heard teachers likely talk about. Um, and then we also provide a substantial amount to family engagement and support, um, as it is an allowable expense for title one. And the Office of Engagement at Dr. Harris's office has worked closely with our team to make sure that the way in which we're using, um, historically we call parental involvement funds and reframing that as family engagement and that aligns very closely with, um, the family engagement strategy in our strategic plan. So that gives us, that's our totals. Um, you'll also see, uh, that we do provide private school set asides, um, as, as we're required by federal law for private, um, schools in the area who request these funds and then indirect costs of transportation. A couple of highlights here that are, um, I think maybe slightly different from last year is, um, we are adding, again upon approval, early intervention instructional assistance so that all of our kindergarten classrooms of title one have a, a full-time assistant and that will allow and support, that will allow our teachers to provide small group literacy and math instruction. Um, so that's probably the most significant enhancement. The, we're also providing additional math and reading coaches to a handful of schools who specifically requested that additional support as part of, um, what we hope will be a, um, a delineation of our title one math and reading teachers into either interventionists that directly work with students or, uh, teacher coaches that directly work with teachers. And right now, our schools are in a mix. So we're, uh, piloting this coaching model at a few schools. And, um, we will be providing stipends to teachers to engage in year-round division-wide collaborative planning. New parental involvement activities that align to our family academy strategy is outlined in our strategic plan. And additional funds for instructional materials for reading, math, and science. Title, title two, um, is directed towards teacher and leader efficacy. And the title two breakdown is, uh, as noted up here. The, um, the main thing we do here is historically the division has utilized these funds for what we call class size reduction teachers, which enables us to provide, um, much smaller classroom sizes. And, um, so that's why you see the largest amount there. We have about twenty teachers that are funded this way. Uh, the reason you, uh, do not see the full amount is because we have carryover funds that are offsetting some of that cost, which is why it's not the, one million wouldn't cover twenty teachers. Um, so we have some rollover funds, which is why it's only showing that amount. This title fund is really, we use these monies to build partnerships with local universities to create, uh, help teachers and leaders get additional endorsements in high-need areas. This helps fund our, um, our TR program. We are increasing teacher endorsements in ESL and special education as well as, um, math, uh, math specialist, the math specialist degree and the administration supervision endorsement. Uh, and so we help, we will be helping teachers offset the cost of pursuing those additional endorsements as well as supporting provisionally licensed teachers with preparing for taking and hopefully passing the praxis so that they get their full licensure. Title three is dedicated to supporting students who are English language learners. And, um, this, again, is the, the smallest of our title three, um, of our title applications, again, it might adjust slightly. The, um, we have it for this year's application. We've added a language access by, of language access bilingual liaison to support our families, um, who are non-English speaking with resources to access all their ESL services with our students. We're adding resources for the parent learning series for families of students who are English learners. We're, um, stipending our teachers, including our ESL teachers, to lead workshops that assist parents in how to support their children at home, particularly with now English language acquisition. And resources to address the high school dropout rate among our English learners, which is significantly high. And then title four, um, this is, um, uh, th- this covers a number of things. Uh, well-rounded education, STEM education, and safe schools, um, safe and secure schools. So, um, the, as a division, we have to sort of spend a third, a third, a third in each of those categories. Um, highlights for this, uh, for this title application is we, this funds our advanced placement work and our access to AP supports so that teachers and students have training as well as resources to, um, not only enroll them in the course, but to, um, succeed in those courses. We are piloting a music program and a pre-K, um, a pre-K at one pre-K center this year because that is part of a well-rounded education. And, um, we've added new resources for student experiences, including positive youth development programs over the summer and partnering with nonprofits and community organizations to make sure students have access to a range of, um, supports and experiences throughout the summer and the school year. Again, much more specifics can be found on each of the lengthy and highly detailed applications on board docs.
Okay, now explain, uh, giving the general overview of title four again, for safe, safe.
Yeah, safe and secure schools, well-rounded education, and STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math education.
Okay, so the positive youth development program, now, does that deal with character education?
Uh, yes, so it deals with a whole host of things. Character education, um, leadership development among students. So we, uh, we are running, we ran a pilot program this year with sixth and ninth graders, fifty of them each over the summer, um, where they do leadership development, character education, and career exploration.
Um, and these are my, I asked that, it's always submitted, you know.
Well, it has to be a group.
Yeah, because, you know, we do have a partnership with, um, nearly, yeah, um, that there, we have, um, uh, who wants to care, it's the character ed, not as appropriate, right? Program, right? Um, and, uh, I think, but we didn't, but went to Old Shepherd, and then it was Old Shepherd. And, um, it is a very interesting program, and I don't know how we can better align, or thought within, um, and support.
Sure. Um, well, I think one next step would be, uh, with our Office of Community Engagement, having a conversation with that team and figuring out, uh, typically that team works closely with my team to make suggestions about programs that we can incorporate. And I can certainly follow up with Dr. Harris on that. Um, and then as with, just as with anything, um, because of our, the nature of our MIE, we're in a multiple approval process. So, um, something can be approved, uh, here through this application. It also has to go through our parental procedures, and it also has to go through prior approval with the VDOE for anything that's related to in-school time, um, which is, uh, a, a process navigate, but we, I would certainly follow up and figure out how this links in with our community partnership work.
Uh, community of caring, you've been mentioning.
Yes, yes, I, yes, I've heard of the program, yeah.
It's not, yeah, it's not, you know.
New, yeah.
It's just a mirror. I think sometimes you just got my attention when you turn up. Uh, the positive.
Sure.
Um, I think sometimes we can forget that that is a resource.
Okay.
And how to better align and make sure, I think the principals are looking for their partners, their grade, but, um, even looking at some data, so where this program's in, you know, certain schools, do you see a difference in behavior?
Yeah.
Do you see a difference in absenteeism?
Sure.
In behavior, um, and suspensions, what happened, you know, so.
I absolutely will follow up, and I, I think that can certainly fall under this review.
Mr. Yeh?
Sure, see, relevant to title one, the three hundred and ten thousand dollars are spending for a family academy. Can you speak to what we're spending those dollars for and could we spend those title one dollars for the stipends for, for our teachers to visit, visit homes? And I, I inquire, um, because for me, I think for all of us, but, but for me, that's one of my, one of my top priorities and dreams for RPS, and last year I think we did four hundred? Four hundred? And so, um, I'm just curious what, uh, I'm still anxious to see what we can scale up to this year, this coming school year. I presume that, uh, cost is some limitation, is one of the limitations there, so I'm just
Sure.
love to juxtapose what we're spending that three hundred for that.
Sure. Um, well, uh, to answer your second question first, I am, I would want, I would want to double check that to see if stipends for home visits is an allowable expense. Uh, so I definitely will circle back on, on that. I'll have to double check. I mean, stipends in general for teachers is an allowable expense. Um, in terms of the three hundred and ten thousand, it's a combination of division, what we call division set aside, which funds activities at the welcome center, it funds the family academies and parent outreach efforts. Uh, and then the other portion comes, uh, it's the sum, it's the sum total of the schools. Each school's school-wide plan has to have a parental involvement component. And so each school, uh, I think, the exact figure is right in the, um, application, which I could, you can pull up, but, um, I think roughly half of that is the sum total of, of our schools' parental involvement efforts. Over time, I think we want to get to a place where they're sort of perfect alignment. But, um, far, I mean, earlier from our comment about the unique needs of each community, each school, and parents, um, give input, typically, a parent organization gives input into the school-wide plan in terms of how those dollars are allocated. But I like your suggestion of, um, using this to scale up home visits, and I'll certainly talk to Dr. Harris about that.
Mrs. Burke?
Thank you. Dr. Evans, I'm asking for two reasons. Out of our forty-four schools, how many are not title one schools?
I think about eight. I'll get your name, or not, are not, right.
I'll get your name, I'm, I need to know the name of the schools.
Okay.
I'm surprised it's that many. I'm also thinking along the lines of the regional piece, but that's a piece we have said as well.
And that is something we're looking at in terms of how those numbers are determined. For example, right now, Huguenot is not, um, considered a title one school. And so we're working with the state to let, validate that data over the next year to figure out, um, given their feeder pattern, it would make sense if Huguenot would be a title one school. But right now, they are not, um, they're not a title one school.
So, so how, how would this, now, I know one time with the, right, how it is determined, because the one time was basically.
Because the one time was based upon free and reduced lunch. But now since we don't collect that data, and I know in high school, I'm sorry, one time we do, and now it's not a Title I school because the high school students are going to bring their paperwork back. So how is it determined? Is it based upon zip code, the area?
Yeah, there's, there's a, a term called the CEP, which I believe is the Community Enterprise Program, or I might be getting that a little bit off, but there's a C, it's a CEP number, and it's an aggregate number of different, provided by the state, of different reporting agencies, of different social services agencies that report an estimate of what the sort of poverty rate is for each school. I think if we want to get the most accurate, the best thing to do is to do a sort of full push to get, collect that information from families. But to your point, I think we're a ways off from being able to do that operationally. So we're, we talked about how we can challenge or validate that CEP number for each school. So we're talking with the state's Office of Federal Programs for, as we go to prepare for the 2021, 2020, 2021, application for that.
Appreciate receiving your information.
Ms. Passby. Oh, we do see more.
Um, so in terms of, sorry, I know this is presented for a first review. I do want to share, if you so are inclined, you certainly could take action on this application tonight. We cannot submit it for review to the VDOE until you approve it, and our next board meeting is not until later this month. So it was requested that this go through two reads. That is certainly the pleasure of the board. Most school divisions do not go through two reads on this. But if you were so inclined to make the motion to approve, we would certainly welcome that. Otherwise, we will bring this up at the next board meeting.
Well, I think you're thoughtful, I guess, pass.
Okay, Dr. Work again. So would you present district level? And then you have the school-based application, they all have their individual budgets.
Yes.
And so the process would be at the school-based level, central office moves, and then it goes to state? Does the state have to approve every school-based budget?
They have, yes, every school-wide plan, yes.
School-wide plan.
We, and this has to match, the school-wide plans have to match the division application. They all go up into one application. And then they, the application plus all the school-wide plans go in together. Is that?
How long is that for?
For the state? I can't speak to their timelines. It, it, it depends on other things that they have going on. We don't have a standard turnaround time on these yet. I mean, generally, the Office of Federal Programs works very well with us and is quick to turn things around, but we're also in the process of submitting our ESSA school permit grants, so I'm not sure which one will take precedence.
It's Owen.
I move that we approve the Title V grant as presented.
Senator. The motions made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve the Title V grant as presented. Second, we have this word in the discussion. Ms. Gibson.
Um, I do have one question. The numbers that were used to generate the budgets, these types, the various Title I budgets are, so that the, the shortfall in terms of reporting our ESL students, is that also mirrored in, in these budgets as well?
For Title III, right now, the Title III funding shows flat. That settlement is flat year over year. So once our numbers get updated and validated with the state, it'll all count. We expect, we can't guarantee, but we expect that we will receive an adjustment for our Title III funding.
Thank you.
Do we have a discussion on that? Okay, the motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke, to approve the Title I grant as presented. Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Passby? Yes, Mrs. Bart, here, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Motion against.
Thank you very much.
Zero. The next item is back home, 06, received the Richmond Technical Center 2019, 2020 schedule.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Camus. I am here to convey forth the administration's recommendation for the 2019, 20, Richmond Technical Center, also known as RTC Bell Schedule. If you all recall, at the June 3rd board meeting, we shared our initial proposal of the bell schedule that offered 194-minute morning class at RTC and 194-minute afternoon class at RTC. As we shared that evening, we plan to bring the proposal feedback in front of the RTC staff. And based on their very candid comments, it was determined that the schedule we were proposing wasn't fully feasible due to the number of students who need more time to spend engaging in clinical site work and field experience. Means we have to think about more time and transportation considerations. For example, students in nursing class may attend their practical at a neighboring hospital, and that would be accomplished with a 94-minute class. We also continue to work with our VDOE partners through multiple iterations of the RTC Bell Schedule to ensure that we remain in compliance with seat hours or clock hours. Based on the feedback and wanting to be in compliance, we concluded that we should continue to offer one AM session that would go from 8:00 to 11:00, three hours and eight minutes. And one PM session that would go from 11:00, 12:00 AM to 2:20 PM, again, three hours and eight minutes, to ensure students have the necessary clock hours for clinical site work and field experiences. The session, both the AM and PM, is clearly more time than typical class period. In fact, it's actually two class periods. During the session, students will have ample time for coursework and field experiences, and we will stay in VDOE compliance with the clock hours. And we will also have the ability to operate within realistic transportation times, as well as transition times, for example, walking through the hallways and getting to your bus. The party of the bus getting to your class, as well as realistic lunchtime, so that our students are not forced to eat lunch on the bus or to grab and go much. However, there will be some leftover time for another class period. During this remaining time that's left over, students at their home school will participate in a non-credit bearing study hall. During the study hall, you'll have the opportunity to do homework, perhaps do additional help, engagement, mediation efforts if they have, they'll have that, that, that's a world test. And maybe have opportunities to meet all of their counselors. I will note that even though, even though this study hall will be non-credit bearing, I can guarantee you that it will have no impact, a very limited impact, on students' ability to still graduate with an advanced diploma, which is 26 credits, or a standard diploma, which is 22 credits. And this is how I would call the questions.
Um, are there other schools, like the CTE program that we have here in Richmond, is there a similar program in other, other districts and, or even throughout the state? And I'm wondering how their transportation models look? And if they also have a study hall that's being suggested?
That is a great question. And I will say that we hold bell schedules from other divisions in Virginia. Now, what I will say is that with us being, and for other corrective action plans, we must ensure that we have the appropriate amount of clock hours. I would say that in other school divisions, those same expectations do not have to be met. And believe it or not, losing out on those two, three, four, five minutes for a class over the course of a school day adds up.
Um, so am I, so if I might understand, that the, the ability to apply for a waiver, since we're under a corrective action plan, we cannot apply for a waiver in terms of instruction hours from the VDOE?
It, I don't think we have.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
Code certainly allows us to apply for a waiver, but it also requires us some way to validate mastery of the course content and curriculum. And given the myriad needs we have as a division, we do not feel that we're yet in a place to invoke that waiver process.
And so I, it's my understanding too, that the, the bell schedule, you know, is different at all of the high schools. Does that add another level of complexity in terms of figuring out a method that will work when each school has a slightly different clock and bell schedule? And is that also a scenario that applies in other school districts that also have a program that's similar to CTE?
That's another great point, and you are absolutely right. Our comprehensive, our schools will have slightly different bell schedules. However, the class that will be impacted is what we are doing, the RTC transition class. That class is the non-credit bearing class. So at one school, that study hall period may be 46 minutes. At another school, it may be 55 minutes, depending on the transportation to and from, to the technical side. So yes, essentially, study hall will be different, the, the length of the study hall will be different at our high school.
Um, so this proposal to have this, this study hall, is this something that the VDOE has vetted and agrees is the best solution?
Yes, they have fully endorsed this as the best solution.
Thank you.
Go on.
Mr. Yeh, your call, was it at the end of your presentation, or are you actually?
Oh, no.
Okay, this time. I move that we bring the RTC standard. In the discussion. The motion was made by Ms. Owen to approve the artist's schedule as presented, seconded by Ms. Burke. Ms. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson? Abstain. Ms. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke, here, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapien?
Yes.
Motion against as bad, zero.
As you all.
The next item is bad, 07, received frames for RPS law then.
All right, good evening, School Board. I think I'm, last one, I could say, in the school. Um, tonight, I'm pleased to present to you one and a half, uh, more goal proposals as related to Dreams for RPS. We'll start with completing Goal 6. As you recall, Goal 6 is related to satisfaction. And at the July meeting, we examined satisfaction as it related to students and staff and teachers. Tonight, we wanted to bring to you the data and proposed targets as related to families, parents, and caregivers. Um, you'll notice that our method for doing so is comparable to what we propose for students, teachers, and staff. We'll be using the survey data from the RPS Family Engagement Survey, which was administered via a third-party vendor, K-1 Insight. They designed and administered surveys with hundreds of school divisions across the country, and they're aligned to our Office of Engagement School Pathie Building Framework. That framework seeks to identify barriers to engagement and then provides us with useful information to guide the process of removing these types of barriers. The survey itself, much like the surveys for the other groups, is a bit longer to give us a lot of information to work from and covers things outside of topics solely related to satisfaction. So because of that, similar to the other ones, we've developed an index to help us hone in on what satisfaction actually looks like. And a parent or caregiver will be considered to be satisfied if they agree or strongly agree to a set percentage of questions in that index. A couple of notes and caveat on our business rules as we have shared for each of the measures. This was the first year that we administered this survey, so we don't have comparison data. Our baseline will be this past year, 2018, 19. In terms of administration, parents and caregivers have opportunity to take the survey via a public web link, email invitation, or completing a microcopy of the school. The survey was open for about six weeks, and close to 10 reminders were sent throughout those two months. We received a little over 3,000 responses to the survey. Survey responses came in from families at all schools. A couple of notes about that. We did remove responses in selected cases from the governor's schools, for example, and because of the index, which I'll again share in a moment, responses that did not include answering all the indexed questions. We think with that, we were left with about a 10% response rate. And while that does sound low, it does fall within the common range for surveys of the general public. It is something, of course, that people will look to increase if they were with you. One other important note, and I think when I review the index with you, you'll understand what point in line, if a parent or caregiver responded, I don't know which was one of the options in the survey, one of the indexed questions, we've noted that as not satisfied. That may be a change that we'll make next year in response options. Here you'll see the eight questions that were selected from the survey overall to be included in the index. I'll let you read those eight. And then we'll consider a parent or caregiver satisfied if they agree or strongly agree 75% or more of the above questions. That's the same percentage that we use for teachers and staff because this is covering multiple domains. And then there are two examples which help, uh, in the exact section. As you can imagine, there's a fair amount of national research that not only helps to inform the construction of our index, but also shows that by improving parent or caregiver satisfaction in school, we also should expect improvements in the number of different informed outcomes for students. So you can see it in some of these three studies below. Increased satisfaction associated with higher student academic achievement. Research showing that successful family engagement sends your building, connecting collaborative building units, as well as its impact on the future. So our baseline data from our current administration of our survey is here to the far right. 75% of our parents or caregivers answered 75 at work agreement with a at least 75% of the indexed questions. And in fact, up here, the other satisfaction rates for the other groups that are on Goal 6 as comparison, but of course, no, those are not the same surface. And so as we think about our work moving forward, you'll see the baseline again in 75%. Um, and we seek over the next four years to increase that, uh, about three percentage points each year, um, to end at close to a ninety percent satisfaction rate, uh, by the end of the strategic plan. Uh, we'll be able to report out our progress, um, each July after we analyze, uh, results from the survey that will take place in this framework, um, as a way to monitor progress throughout the year. We'll also focus groups with parents and caregivers to be focused. Any questions on goal six?
Ms. Gibson?
Um, uh, thank you. I just wanted to note that I think it's important that, um, in addition to the index that it's been designed at, we also release, uh, more detailed, uh, survey data, um, for the, for the public. And I can often have people complete a survey and then they want to see what the results are. And so, um, we'll present for, um, the teacher's sponsors that do think that it's important, um, to, to provide that to the public, perhaps on this dashboard tool, but, um, but that documentation should actually be available.
Um, we'll be sharing it with our principals at the September cluster meeting, then making it available more widely. They'll be held in action next week.
Thank you.
Let me get the remote. No vote is allowed, he's got the key. This is a test. We'll do the voting, but we will remember.
Um, so the next goal that we're going to look at is goal nine, uh, which is to decrease suspensions, uh, overall and for each sub-group. Um, and so as the title of the goal suggests, um, restorative justice is certainly one of the strategies that we'll use, um, to address the goal, upon specifically look at the, um, measure that we use, um, to mark our progress. So we will track progress for reducing suspensions by calculating the number of total days that RPS students were suspended during a school year. Um, in order to make this comparable from year to year, when enrollment might go up or down, um, we will divide the number of days by the total number of students enrolled in the division and multiply that by hundred. So this will give us the number of days suspended for one hundred students in the division, making it comparable from year to year. Um, there's an example below that, um, just so you can kind of contextualize what it means for the number of days suspended for hundred students. So for example, a rate of ninety days of suspension for one hundred students might suggest that we brought together a random sampling of a hundred students. Um, collectively, they served ninety days of suspension on average. But that could mean that four students served ten-day suspensions, which were forty days. Six students served a five-day suspension, totaling thirty days. And ten students served two-day suspension, uh, totaling twenty days. And most students weren't suspended at all. Um, so it's just important to think about, uh, what that, uh, might look like on average. Um, some important, um, notes and caveats are business rules for this measure. The VDOE does not track the number of days suspended in divisions across the state. The VDOE tracks the percent of individual students suspended during a given year. We did not choose however, or we're not proposing to use that measure, um, for two reasons. One, we feel that, uh, looking at the days of suspension offers a more holistic measure of suspensions. But also it allows us the opportunity to track our own division's growth in reducing the number of suspension incidents a particular student might have. So if a student had had five incidents of suspension in one year, and then through restorative practices or other strategies, that only two incidents of suspension in the subsequent year, we would capture that growth. The VDOEs method would not, because they would just be tracking the percent of students and that student was in suspension one of those years. Um, we have included both short-term and long-term out-of-school suspensions, um, in our calculations. There are some certain classifications that student, of students that aren't included, such as regional schools, homeschools, where it's probably more likely to be, um, likely to be extended, and virtual schools. Um, and then we've included students who transfer, um, in or out of RPS during the school year, um, in the past as well. So you don't need to be enrolled. Um, the noted impacted suspensions on students, in particular students of color, is well documented. Um, I know the Merck came out with a report, uh, just this past, uh, week. So certainly this has been something, um, uh, on top of mind for, for many people. Uh, and restorative justice practices have a versus a promising method, um, of addressing suspensions. Uh, there are four, um, pieces, well, few pieces of national research that we, uh, examine, uh, which, uh, point out things such as students who are subject to multiple, uh, suspensions, um, are far more likely to have contact with the adult justice system. Uh, so important averages that will relate, uh, to our baseline. Um, the ACLU, uh, found that students on average, uh, were being suspended twenty-three days for every one hundred, uh, students enrolled. Um, and, uh, the most rigorous evaluation of restorative justice practices, uh, to date happened in Pittsburgh, which showed that, uh, the implementation of those practices participating in schools were reducing suspensions by roughly ten days for one hundred students. We also cited our own, um, education trust, uh, equity audit, which showed our disproportionality, um, in suspensions. So, um, we can't make, as I already shared, um, comparisons to other divisions in the state based on days of suspension, uh, but we are, are able to compare, uh, school year, um, twenty seventeen, eighteen, um, to this past year, where we've already begun to see, um, some notable, uh, progress, um, likely attributable to our pivoting of restorative practices, um, as well as the thoughtful work that's, uh, has been done and continues to be done, uh, with the score. So in twenty seventeen, eighteen, um, we suspended a hundred and forty-one days of suspension for one hundred students. And this past year, that had been reduced to a hundred and seven days of suspension for one hundred students. Um, again, while we may not have comparison data to the state, I'll again draw your attention to the ACLU study, which indicated an average of twenty-three days of suspension for one hundred students. So we are significantly above, um, averages and have significant work to do. Um, so here are our, um, uh, targets. By twenty twenty-three, we need to cut the number of days of suspension for one hundred students in half. Um, from a hundred and forty-one, uh, that we had in seventeen, eighteen, uh, to roughly seventy in twenty-two, twenty-three. In terms of reporting our progress, um, uh, because this is live data, um, we'll be able to provide updates to the board, um, at multiple touchpoints, which are supposed to November and April. Um, and we'll deliver our final annual figure for number of days of suspension in, uh, the July following then.
Ms. Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Barlow. Um, and thank you, yeah, so, uh, I think, I think goal number nine is an extremely important one. Um, it's, it's very clear that we need to do, uh, what we can to reduce the number of suspensions and, uh, percentage of days of suspensions of our students. Uh, I do have some questions about, uh, how we are measuring progress in this regard though. Um, so, uh, what is, do you, is, is there, I understand that we think that we get more holistic look by looking at the number of days suspended as opposed to the percentage of students suspended per year. Uh, do you think it would be helpful for us for comparison purposes to be presented with the data of the percentage of students, uh, per year?
Yeah, so I'll have that data, I can bring that next time.
So whether, you know, whether that's a goal is a, is not a question. But I do think if these were to have practical purposes, it could be, uh, informative for the board to see that. Um, and then, uh, the other, the, the thing that I struggle with with regard to measuring the success of our trauma-practiced practices and our restorative justice practices is knowing if it's those practices that are actually reducing the number of days of suspension. So I, I definitely think there's an important place for it. But we could also reduce the number of days suspensions by, of suspensions by telling our teachers not to suspend students anymore. And then, you know, in those types of situations, I'm concerned about whether, uh, whether our schools are being given the tools that they need to address, um, address student behavior and student mental health with trauma-practiced and restorative justice. So is there any way we can go about measuring and perhaps, you know, measuring or at least giving more input on to what degree we can attribute that success to trauma-practiced and restorative justice practices? So I know we've got, for example, we've got pilots, right? And, and that's great. And I, my hope is that we see that these pilots are successful and implement them to date in line. Uh, but, um, I also want to make sure that, that we have some way of measuring, uh, that, that we're either implementing them or that they're being successfully.
Yes. Um, so I'll say two things, uh, action three point one and action three point two are obviously the, the work, um, tied specifically to those initiatives. Um, and in September, we'll be rolling out project plans for each one of the priorities within the strategic plan. And there will be opportunities to measure success of those initiatives there. This goal is specifically introduced plan about reducing suspensions. RJ or trauma-practiced might be one way, but I think actually we're hoping that many things come together to help do that. I do though want to address one thing that you said that, um, I think came up in the past. And so we want to make very clear another reason why we did not, um, set the goal around, um, uh, number of incidents of suspension is we have spent time with the SOAR committee this past year, um, outlining what, um, expected behaviors are as well as consequences when those are not met. And so while we certainly don't want students to have excessive suspensions, there may be some infractions or instances where that is the appropriate consequence. So while no suspensions is certainly a goal, we do not want people feeling what the administration is saying is we have to get down to zero suspensions and therefore you don't have, um, all of the tools that you may need.
If I may add, by counting days, it does create an incentive though to say, does the student need to be out pending with five suspensions, with four suspensions? So I think it maintains this letter for the score. But it also does create an incentive for principals to stop and think, does the student actually need to be out for about three days? And the way the score is written is there are ranges. And the goal here obviously is to address the underlying issues so that the behavior doesn't continue. But similarly, is to keep kids in school. And so we actually talked quite a bit about this, and I think this is an elegant way of getting at both of those.
I hope the data as well, and I can circulate it, but just to share it, uh, compared to day. Um, so for RPS, uh, we have about, and just so you know, it's a, yes, maybe not with a line graph. Uh, about fifteen, um, and this was for short-term suspensions. I'm not sure if all of this is rules. Um, fifteen percent of students, um, in RPS. Um, and you remember our unusual comparison points, which is then, um, high number of economically disadvantaged, um, across the state. That looks like it's coming in at about nine. Um, the rest of the state comes in at about probably five point five. Uh, and our neighbors of Henrico, Chesterfield, and Hanover come in probably at a little under five. So, um, significantly higher than any of ours.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. Um, so I think, um, in, in general, as we're looking at the metrics that we are tracking, um, I, I want to suggest that we're not limiting ourselves to just one metric per goal. Um, and my suggestion particularly, you know, on this one, is that we consider including both the percentage, the status including as well as the number of days, because I do think that, um, having the comparison with how other districts are tracking is, um, is important and can be helpful to easily reference in, in one document here. So my, my suggestion is that, um, definitely include both numbers. Um, I also think that it's important that we, um, have the ability to drill down, um, uh, particularly, uh, you know, uh, by race and, um,
In the dashboard.
Yeah, and with our IUP students as well. Um, and I think, um, uh, following up on, uh, what, uh, Mr. Barlow noted, you know, I do worry that, um, because restorative justice is just a pilot at this point, that naming the goal restorative justice, um, is perhaps a bit misleading and, uh, may want to consider until the, that, uh, program is, is rolled out, uh, comprehensively throughout the district, that we name this particular goal something specific to discipline, uh, just so that there isn't confusion there. Um, and if there is a way, uh, of tracking though which students, um, have, you know, which suspensions, there was some touch that was related to restorative justice, um, I think that that would be important to be able to track so that we can look at this particular strategy and see how, um, you know, how those numbers are, are impacted and, you know, in terms of whether that particular strategy is working.
Thank you. Next item is item seven, your consent agenda, received by action, the job description is favorable for senior auditor position. This position was posted on board acts for your review, I just need a motion at this time. So who, the consent agenda?
Um, I'm not able to, I mean, I don't include a behavior on this particular job. Um, so I, I would like to have a discussion prior to the vote if the board is not allowed. I guess, I motion to remove this woman consent agenda.
You should always honor college requests there too.
Ms. Gibson is motioning to take us off of the consent agenda, executive administration now. Do you want to speak to this office? Uh, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Please have to remove them. Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Da'vise P.
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Burke.
Okay, motion against a bad zero, but it exists. I'm sorry, Ms. Owen.
Sure.
Six, zero. Okay, um, did you want to discuss this tonight, Ms. Gibson?
Um, because I'm trying to move to the next meeting here.
Thank you. Um, the next item is eight other informational items, and these documents were on board acts for your review, the revised or relational chart, and the solar initiative, doing new business this evening. Any announcements? Mr. Young?
Uh, briefly, and I, yeah, I said, oh, no, I guess we're on a subject. Solar initiative, what I reviewed on the board dot, it included the calendar, the chronology of, uh, installation, a reference subject to, to the Indiana, so terrible.
The next one, please, sorry.
Also with backpack, BCU, NCIS, don't forget, all this one thing, all my students, district leader, present. Three to eight P M in Harwood.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Ms. Gibson?
Um, I just have, uh, some new business items. I wanted to, uh, reiterate your request for a standing agenda item to look at the execution of the strategic plan, specifically at the, um, particular budget, uh, items as it relates to the strategic plan. Um, and then I also wanted to inquire Um, and then I also wanted to inquire the timing, I, my understanding is in the last meeting, the good revised program study side was, um, was, uh, presented, and as a first reading, I'm wondering the timing for adopting the program study side. And then, um, the, the final thing is just reiterating your request for an update regarding the timing to have a facility planned budget developed.
Any other announcements?
Well, for starters, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, thanks so many community members for coming out to Carver Elementary last Friday to, uh, see the celebration for the Rose of Love grant and the wonderful new washer and dryer we have, uh, in the, uh, basement of Carver Elementary to help support our students who, um, and families who may have trouble with access to, uh, to clean clothing or to, uh, facilities to, uh, to clean their clothes. And I think it's a great step, uh, towards ensuring that all of our students, uh, and families, uh, feel, um, a sense of pride in what they're learning in school and, uh, and in these lives. So it was incredible. I think we, we had well over a hundred, um, community members come out. We had members of the, uh, Washington's, uh, professional football team playing with the kids, and, uh, it was, uh, really a sight to behold. It was, uh, a great day for Carver.
If there isn't anything else, can someone be listening to calls?
This was the section two, one, two, that three, seven, one, one, eight, seven. For the janitor, the element that was at the school was the inclusion, the meeting process, the social clean council of meetings, by, uh, stat number of consulting to the actual delegation, it is twenty minutes, two, zero, one, eight, dash, ten, twenty eighteen, dash, eleven, and delegation matters twenty nineteen, dash, oh, one.
So, so we've got our second executive on the stage, you go to those who are legal, all afraid, any of those, you are now in those.